Are we ready Mia?
Yes, we are ready to go.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everybody. This is a meeting of the Town of Moraga, Town Council, regular meeting this Wednesday, January 12th, 2022 at 6:30 PM. This is a teleconference meeting. To observe the meeting, you may use the live stream link located on the agenda on the town website. To participate in the meeting and provide public comment, use the Zoom link in the agenda via the town's website. And you may also use the phone by using a phone number and webinar ID on the agenda. If you want to speak during the public comment portion of the meeting, use the raise hand feature of Zoom or press star nine if on the phone. So at 6:31 PM, I'm calling this meeting to order since this is a teleconference. We'll do a roll call. Councilmember Onoda.
Here.
Councilmember McClure.
Here.
Councilmember Wolleke.
Here.
Vice Mayor Macker.
Here.
Mayor Sauce is here. Everyone is in attendance.
Actually, oh yes, you're right. Sorry.
Do we have a sixth council member I don't know about? Okay, good. We're all here. So next, we move to the pledge of allegiance. Steve, would you do the honors, please?
Happy to do so. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Steve and John. Thank you for the flag. Next, special announcements. There are none. Next item is proclamations and presentations. There also are none. The next item is public comments and suggestions. This is time reserved for those in the audience who wish to address the Town Council on items that are not on the agenda. You should be aware that the council can't discuss details or vote on non-agenda items. Your concern may be referred to staff or placed on a future agenda. Public input will also be taken on each agenda item. Mike, you have your hand raised.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to alert you. I'm going to try a virtual stepping down from the dais and speak as a resident, so we'll see how this goes.
Okay, and then you'll come back, right?
Maybe.
Okay, depending on how it goes. All right. Okay, but let's go ahead with with others while Mike gets himself situated technologically. I see the raised hand of Bobby Preston. Bobby, please come in. And you have three minutes, Bobby.
Good evening, council and staff. Bobby Preston, 1307 March, Moraga. I am the Moraga Garden Club Chair and Co-Founder of Moraga for Monarchs. I'm sure you all are aware that the Moraga for Monarchs project and Moraga Garden Club at Rancho Laguna is essentially finished. The garden club is profoundly grateful to the Moraga Park and Recs and Public Works Departments and the Town Council for their ongoing support and participation in the project and the Moraga Park Foundation for their early support, which in turn provided us the street cred to stimulate a huge amount of support from the community. Rancho Laguna has hit a big jump in utilization as families come to admire the flowers, learn about monarch support, and now take selfies with the 36-foot bronze, copper, and stainless steel monarch statue. The goal of engagement with the community and supporting of monarch butterflies is clearly being met daily. The garden club continues to offer docent tours and support, community planting, pollinator supportive home gardens, distribution of seed and plant material in the community. The Rancho Laguna garden has been certified by Monarch Joint Ventures as a certified monarch waystation. I now ask that the mayor and the town go public with their support and sign the National Wildlife Foundation's Mayor's Monarch Pledge. More than 600 mayors and heads of local and tribal governments have signed this pledge, engaging 6 million people and restoring more than 6,500 acres of monarch habitat in the US and now Mexico and Canada. By taking the Mayor's Monarch Pledge, you are committing to both restore habitat in our community and encourage our residents to do the same. Mayors commit to at least three action items out of 30 suggested possibilities that our community initiate throughout the year to support monarch conservation and report on the projects at December 31st years in. The hurdles are not high, and I am personally committed to helping the town meet the required actions and reporting. By installing the donated benches at Rancho Laguna, the town has already met one of the three yearly required goals for 2022. Entering a notice about the new habitat and how you can get more information by contacting Moraga for Monarchs and by issuing a proclamation to raise awareness about the decline of monarch butterflies and the species need for habitat, the town will have already met three goals. It's pretty easy. In the Bay Area, mayors of Arinda, Pittsburgh, and Oakland have all taken the pledge, and now it's Moraga's opportunity to take a lead. The community has really gotten behind the monarch project, and we hope very much the town will take this opportunity to build on that enthusiasm and make Moraga a shining example of environmental awareness and community action. I submitted to Marty the particulars about the pledge program. As a second request, the Moraga Garden Club and the Moraga Library are jointly establishing a community seed sharing library at the Moraga Library. A smallest contribution by the town of, say, $200 would help defray the cost of printing and packaging materials and allow them to quickly obtain the books to guide citizens in seed collecting and sharing. We hope to have this seed sharing library functional by mid-February. That is a month away. Lastly, I ask that once Commons West reverts to the town, consideration be given to establishment of a native wildflower meadow in the current grassy and weedy area. I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Bobby, so much for for that presentation. All right, I see raised hand by Mike McClure, resident, so I just want to make clear to everyone that Mike has joined as a resident and will be speaking as a resident and not as a council member. Mike, come on in.
Can you hear me?
There you are. We can hear you.
Okay, let me know if you hear an echo, and I think we do. Okay, hang on. Okay, I left the main meeting. Okay, I'm leaving the webinar as a council member. Okay, great.
You're good.
Hello. Hello, this is Mike McClure. I'm a Moraga resident and Rotarian, and I'd like to present the idea of a Moraga Community Service Day to the Town Council for consideration for the next week's 2022 Goals and Priorities. This idea comes to us after many successful years in Pleasant Hill since 2005 and Walnut Creek 2009. The objective is to identify projects which will improve our community and beyond, focusing on the less fortunate, seniors, schools, beautification of our town, and more. What's different about this project is this project would be performed and completed by engaging our 17,000 residents and families by focusing on one or two days, potentially in the fall of this year. The project would be organized, structured, and managed by a steering committee consisting of Rotary, Kiwanis, Lions, Moraga School District, Campolindo Garden Club, and potentially the Town of Moraga, and others would be welcome. The three service groups Rotary, Kiwanis, and Lions have given their preliminary support to this idea. Sample projects from what Pleasant Hill and Walnut Creek have done include food and clothing drives for homeless, children, and senior projects for those in need, all levels of schools, tree and landscaping, beautification and planting, repairing bikes, and much more. Of course, we can create and tailor projects to our own needs. I'll be spending, I'll be sending more information before or at the Goals and Priority Meeting next week, and wanted to share this information in advance for your reflection and consideration of this idea. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. All right, any other public comment on items not on the agenda? I see no other hands. Did we get any correspondence that folks have asked us to read into the record?
We did, but it is on an item that's on the agenda.
On the agenda, okay. All right, therefore, I will close public comments. Next item, adoption of the consent agenda. I am going to ask councilmembers if they would like, anybody would like to pull an item. I'd like to pull 6.3. Are there any other items that councilmembers would like to pull? Mike?
Yes, I'd like to pull 6.2 and 6.8.
Okay. Any others?
Yes.
Steve?
Thank you.
Thank you for raising your hand officially.
I'd like to pull 6.9 and 6.11.
Okay. Any others? Okay, so before we do, let's let, why don't we, let's, can I get a motion to approve 6.1, 6.4, 6.5, 6.6, 6.7, 6.10, and 6.12?
So moved.
Motion by Steve, second by Mike?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call, vote. Councilmember Onoda?
Yes.
Councilmember McClure?
Yes.
Councilmember Wolleke?
Yes.
Councilmember Vice Mayor Macker?
Yes.
Mayor Sauce is a yes. All right, so those items are adopted unanimously. Let's do, let's go in order just to keep this simple. Mike, you wanted to pull 6.2, the minutes of the meeting of October 12th?
Yes, and again, the minutes are a summary of what's said, so I usually don't look too close on this unless there's something glaring, but if you go to page seven and you go to the bottom of the page, I believe they have the wrong name there. Madam Mayor, they list your name there, and the second sentence says, "She offered a motion to direct staff to reopen the application period for another week." I do not believe that was you. I believe that was myself or Steve. I haven't had a chance to check the tape. I would suggest we we take the time to have someone look at it and then confirm next meeting.
Yeah, so are you suggesting, Mike, that we just pull it and consider it at the next meeting? Is that acceptable?
Yes, that's that's my motion.
Oh, okay. Do we need a motion on that? Denise?
Yes, I would recommend we have a motion to continue since we've already adopted our calendar.
Okay, so a motion to continue by by Mike. I'll second that motion. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, vote. Councilmember Onoda?
Yes.
Councilmember McClure?
Yes.
Councilmember Wolleke?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Macker?
Yes.
Mayor Sauce is a yes unanimously approved. Okay, 6.3, I pulled that. I I did it only because I wanted to make sure that to the extent there was anybody who wanted to offer public comment on this item had the opportunity, if we, you know, shed one last piece of sunshine on it, or is there anyone, any members of the public who would like to comment? Okay, seeing none, I would like to move approval of consent agenda item 6.3.
Second.
Second.
A motion, Sauce, second McClure. Roll call, vote. Let's see, I should, okay. Councilmember Onoda?
Yes.
Councilmember McClure?
Yes.
Councilmember for another three seconds, Wolleke? Outgoing Vice Mayor Macker?
For three seconds. Yes.
Mayor Sauce is a yes unanimously approved. We, going forward now, our vice mayor is Steve Wolleke. Steve, congratulations, and I will refer to you as such for the rest of the meeting, and look at that, it's already been fixed by by our incredible staff. Thank you.
And thank you, and Sona, thank you so much for your flexibility in this.
Yes, thank you all. Okay, next item that was pulled is 6.8. Mike, I believe that was yours.
That is mine, yes. And you might wonder why I'm pulling this. This is a very good project, traffic safety, pedestrian, and bicycles. However, the first issue I have is we are asking for new funding that we haven't granted before related to the beginning of the 2223 budget process in the tune of $272,000. Just make sure, did I get that correct, Town Manager?
We are not actually asking for funding right now. There's no action to appropriate the funds, but there is an understanding, or there should be an understanding of the count from the council, that we will be budgeting these funds in next years, or you're kind of committing to budget these funds in next years if you get the grant.
Right, and so so my point is that something that's substantial that's new, first of all, I just don't think it should be on consent. Second, I think it should be on agenda. My larger point is, I like this item, but before we vote for this, before we start our CIP and budgeting process, that concerns me. I mean, we've mentioned in the past, we want to, we want to see all the projects, and then we usually have limited funding, and we have to make choices. And to do this on a one-off without knowing what else is out there, I mean, I do not oppose this, but I just think we should wait the two or three months for our CIP and operating budget to begin on this. So I would suggest that we continue this at that time.
Any other, any council questions, Sona?
I have a question. So what do we mean by, what do you mean by what else is out there? I'm not following that.
Okay, if I may, typically when we have a CIP project, you'll see a list of projects, very long list. Also, you'll have an operating budget with a list. So what we're doing here is we're taking one project out before we start that process and saying it's a good project. Let's put it in matching funds and let's send it in, and we are effectively making a commitment. By making a commitment on this one, well, there may be other projects that we like better than this, and we just haven't seen it. So we're doing it on a one-off, and I don't see any compelling reason here that we shouldn't wait the two or three months when we begin our CIP, which is capital programs.
Cynthia?
Yes, so there is a grant deadline of January 27th, 2022 for this particular grant, and that is why we are making the recommendation at this time. Staff met with the superintendent of Moraga School District and evaluated the needs of the community with a focus on traffic safety, which was one of the council's goals for this year, and based on that information, developed this project that they thought would qualify for funding. We know that the Corliss project is a high priority. However, that doesn't meet the funding criteria and wouldn't score high enough. So this is an opportunity for us to do a traffic safety project at a school that's a priority of the school and to get grant funding for that, and in order to meet the deadline, we need to do that at this time. Is there anything to add to that, Sean?
Yes, thank you. So we're asking for the councils to support the application of the grant. We will not know if we are awarded funds and to what amount the funds would be, but in order to be able to play in this field, we have to submit an application in the Town Council at the time of award, if we are so lucky, can make the decision to continue the project and continue deciding to what, to what degree we would fund it and what priorities we would have. The project would not have to be completed immediately. I think we have a three-year window to complete the project, and we can schedule it according to the, you know, the priorities of the community and the priorities of the Town Council. But in order for us to even begin the process and contemplate it, we have to have an application. And we've already submitted a preliminary application to get feedback from the Country-Costa County Bicycle Coalition, who's provided us feedback. Part of the reason this project qualifies is because it's multimodal and has a bicycle component that serving the community and the citizens in the school is an important aspect of the crosswalk project, because we'll be putting in some bike lanes and making it safer for everybody in that area. So this was the highest priority project as far as the grant funding stipulations, and we're hopeful to have a successful outcome from this. But we're just beginning the process, and, you know, as we go along, we come back to the council for additional direction as we get more more input back from the review. Now, the review in the ward are somewhere in the May to June timeframe, and so we're fairly quickly going to be able to be able to come back to you and give you some more updates, and you can figure that into your CIP planning and budgeting at that time.
Thank you, Sean. Mike?
Well, thank you. It's very helpful. I didn't realize of the January 27 deadline. So Sean, you mentioned the decision is May or June, so let's just say hypothetically in April, we came up with a different answer. Could we notify them before they make the decision that we've somehow altered our application?
Yeah, there's multiple opportunities here. We could pull the application. We could, you know, if we're lucky enough to get the grant application, we can schedule it in a time period within those three years that's more conjoined to our budgeting and our priorities. So we have some flexibility, but this just begins the process, and as we move through it, of course, we come back to council for directions, how to keep proceeding.
So this is not our last bite at the apple?
That's correct.
Okay. Mike, are you, are your questions answered?
Yeah, I'm fine moving forward.
Okay, are you moving approval of 6.8?
Yeah, did you want public comment or?
Yes, thank you. Any public comment on this item? I see no hands, so I'll close public comment. Thank you, Mike, for that reminder. Yes.
Yeah, I just want to say I moved to approve consent item 6.8.
Do I have a second? Okay, motion McClure, second Onoda. Roll call, vote. Councilmember Macker?
Yes.
Councilmember Onoda?
Yes.
Councilmember McClure?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wolleke?
Yes.
Mayor Sauce is a yes, approved unanimously. Agenda, consent agenda item 6.8 moves forward. All right, 6.9, Steve, I believe you pulled that one.
Yes, thank you, and this will, this will take just a minute. This, this consent item addresses continuing maintenance of Moraga's our online geographic information system, and I, a couple of brief purposes for this polling this. One of them is just to ensure that as many residents, members of Moraga are aware that this is available to them via the website under the planning department. This is a great tool. It shows every lot within Moraga and includes zoning information on each of those lots and density and square footage. I've, a number of months ago, I had a fairly extensive experience using it, and it really does tell a story about the town. A second piece of this question, though, is the, I also accessed the county version of the GIS, and the two correlate very, very well. Is there a particular reason that we have our own GIS that has to be maintained as opposed to the county GIS?
I can respond to that.
Sure.
Brian Horn, Associate Planner. Yeah, the county just doesn't have our zoning, doesn't have our general plan layer. So if you go to the county's, you know, the county's website, it's going to just, it'll give you some of the square footages, I believe, of the homes or the living area, I think, is what they have assessed, but it doesn't give you the zoning or the general plan designations for the town. So that's kind of the primary purpose is for the town to maintain its own zoning and general plan layers for for our use.
And let me just add that it also has a significant amount of information regarding our public works infrastructure.
And I understand, the second, the last part of this is, I understand we're, for example, adding storm drain, a layer of storm drain information to our GIS. Is that correct, and is that going to be available to public?
Sean, do you want to come on and answer that? Thank you.
Yes, of course. So, yes, as as we go along in increasing our capabilities with GIS, we are adding storm drain information into the GIS, and it's kind of a long-term process as we go along, and, you know, we work with the planning, planning operates the contract, but there is a budget for engineering to add these layers and maintain those layers with placework.
And will they, will they be available to the public once they get put on? Just, just a quick question on that.
Yes.
Okay, great. So I've done my publicizing of this, which I think is a great tool, and I commend the town for making it readily available. I'm, I am happy to make a motion to approve item, consent item number 6.9.
Thank you, Steve. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Public comments?
Public comments?
Excuse me.
No public comments. Do we have a second? Councilmember Teresa, so motion, Steve, second Teresa. Roll call, vote. Councilmember Macker?
Yes.
Councilmember Onoda?
Yes.
Councilmember McClure?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wolleke?
Yes.
Mayor Sauce, yes, unanimously approved. Thank you. Thank you, Steve, for daylighting that, because it is a fantastic tool. Even I can use it, so it's very user-friendly. All right, last item that was pulled, I believe, is 6.11. Steve, that's yours as well?
Thank you. I'll try to make this quick also. So 6.11 concerns a study, an energy optimization study for redundant or emergency power for the for the town, and it was approved project for the 2021, 2022 project. So, and this is something as presented in the staff report that I've had significant concern about. That original capital project, as approved, was for an energy optimization study, as noted, and to supply emergency power to four Moraga facilities, and those are the Town Office and the Town Council chambers, which contain the Police Department and the Emergency Operations Center. Both of those are critical, and then also the library and the hacienda. And so we've gone out and and we have, we've gotten bids or a bid, and the sort of summarizing my concerns is that the recommended contractor's proposal, as included in the staff report, significantly deviates from the original approved project. And to address that, I presented my concerns to staff today in memo form. Staff responded. We had a substantial substantive discussion this afternoon, and in summary, staff established that the scope of work, which will be included in the final contract to be signed, will be aligned with the original approved project work scope. It's something they've got to work out with the contractor. And to me, that's really critically important for, you know, contracting purposes that you have alignment. And, and to me, that's really critically important for, you know, contracting purposes that you have alignment. And. So, you know, I, I thank Sean and Cynthia for spending time with me and addressing my concerns. And showing that we do have a good solution going forward. And I'm happy to discuss further details when the town council is ready. I'm happy to propose a. Resolution. Or, or motion.
Teresa.
Oh, thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor, could you explain a little bit more about how. This deviated from your, the understanding of the original?
Sure. The, the contractor Clean Coalition, in their proposal. Instead of really sticking just to emergency power. That was quite a bit broader and, and they essentially champion a particular type of solution, which is called the microgrid. And in particular, solar microgrid. And I commend that. But our, our study is approved, as approved is really more broader and trying to take whatever. Alternatives, evaluate those alternatives and make the, the best selection as opposed to. The, the proposal sort of comes, comes across as almost pre-selecting what they, what, what they. Are driving towards. Sean, is that a fair characterization?
We, we do have the Craig Lewis, the founder and executive director of Clean Energy, and I think maybe also Gregory Harris. Also a founder and principal of Hewitt Engineering who are teaming up on this proposal. And I've had discussions with them about the proposal and, and the proposal does have, you know, broad information. They, they are dealing the range from small agency to the state. And, and they're dealing with policies and they're dealing with. Large facilities, but small and also small facilities like us. And so they have a lot of information that was in the proposal. And I think it was to highlight just their experience and knowledge of the field. But, but the proposal, you know, as written, has the, the section of the information that says that they'll be following. Our R F P and we've had discussions that, you know, the contract will be, you know, the language in the contract will be. Around the details and the scope of what's covered in our R F P and they have indicated they're comfortable with that. And so. It, they do, they do, they are here in present and you, it can address any. Comments to them about their comfortable be able to perform what was requested out of the R F P. But from my understanding, I think, you know, based on my conversations with them, we should be fine with what was outlined in the R F P, which is. Quite extensive.
Yeah.
So, so I'm sorry, go ahead, Steve.
Well, I was just gonna add, Teresa, you know, one of my concerns was to ensure that the study takes into account, for example, that. We get all, basically almost all our power or all our power, the town gets all our power from M C E, which is eighty percent clean at present. And potentially going up to a hundred percent clean. And that, that could impact the, the study. That's, for example, one of the things I wanted to make sure. Are, is addressed. And my driver objective is to make sure it's a, a, a good contract for both parties. So that both parties succeed in there and there isn't confusion as to what the scope of work is. That's what's really driving me. It's not that I'm driving towards a particular solution or, or restrictions. It's, it's just to make sure that there's, there's clarity. Between the parts.
I, I, I have a question. So the, the contract is not here, right, in this packet?
Correct.
But as I understand it, all parties here are in agreement that the contract will provide for. The, the backup piece of, of the scope of work that was put out in the R F P and, and, and everybody's, everybody is on the same page about that. Is that right? Not, not of heads?
You're on mute, Craig.
That's fine. I was just asking for a not of heads.
Oh, sorry. I didn't know if there was a formal, I need to be invited to speak. Yes, that, that is definitely very clear. And, and I will also say that our proposal, even though. Vice Mayor Wolke is, is correct that we use language like solar microgrids predominantly in the, in the proposal. It, it, we do also, we are also very clear that we will be evaluating all of the. Combinations permutations that were called out in the, in the R F P. And if you look on, let's see what page is it? I believe it is page. Seven of twenty three, it's page, it's, it's PDF page eighteen. In the, in the staff report, that is a, that's page seven of twenty three of our proposal, the Clean Coalition proposal. And, and it says the key findings will include the following. Number one. The optimal mix of distributed energy resources, which is, the acronym is D E R. And it will, it will evaluate each of the following three resource scenarios. So one is a solar microgrid, which is a combination of solar and energy storage. So that's A. B is a hybrid solar microgrid, which is a solar microgrid with the combination of a fossil fuel backup. That's usually in the form of diesel or natural gas based generation. And then C is a fossil fuel generator only. So we are, we are planning to look at all of those scenarios and I. And I, we just took it as granted that, you know, the current scenario, which we call the business as usual. We, everything will be, will be compared against that as a baseline. The business as usual is the baseline. And that is continuing to just buy your power from M C E. Which doesn't provide any resilience at all. So we're trying to optimize economic, environmental and resilience benefits. And we think that overall, that's what's being called for in the R F P. And we will evaluate all of those energy scenarios to come up with our recommendations and, and then, you know, council will make its decision from there.
Thank you. Thank you, Craig. Any other questions from council members? All right, any public comment? Seeing no hands raise a closed public comment. Denise? Denise, on, for the motion, do you, would you like the motion to be made by title of the resolution?
No, this was a consent item, so you would just be approving the consent item per usual.
Okay, thank you. All right, Steve, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. I move for approval of six point one one on the consent agenda.
Second.
Second, but Teresa, roll call vote, council member Macker.
Yes.
Council member Onoda.
Yes.
Council member McClure.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wolke.
Yes.
Mayor Sauce, yes, approved unanimously. All right, I believe if I.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. And Steve, good catch. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Much appreciated.
Very much.
Really like forward to working with all of you.
We do as well. Thank you so much for coming, Craig. All right. That's it for the consent agenda. Next up is adoption of the meeting agenda. Do I, can I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve as drafted.
Second, then. Second, Teresa. Any public comments? All right, no public comments. So roll call vote, council member Macker.
Yes.
Council member Onoda.
Yes.
Council member McClure.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wolke.
Yes.
Council member Sauce, yes, passes unanimously. Next, we have reports of council members. Sona, can you kick us off?
Yes, absolutely. Well, I think coming out of last week's meeting, I really continued to feel energized. And I'm very happy that we have a path forward. In terms of updates from me, I'm really focusing on continuing to get to know groups and individuals in the community. I was really excited to receive an invitation from the Maraga Garden Club. And they're continuing to look for. Both female, but also many male volunteers. So trying to rope in my husband and others into that. And it was good to hear about the, the monarchs today as well. And then looking forward to committee assignments as another way to continuing to participate and connecting to the community at large.
Thank you, Sona. Teresa.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I really don't have anything to report yet. Thank you.
Great report. Thank you very much. Mike?
Yes, so in about the last month, took a little time off, talked to a number of residents about the December eighth meeting, as I know all of us have. And last week, attended the chamber board meeting as liaison and. Was the first time we had some quantifiable information on members and budgets. And it was disappointing and alarming, quite frankly. So. The membership has declined significantly more than fifty percent. And they've asked me not to give out specific numbers. Their first draft of the budget has a significant deficit. So they're looking for ways to raise funds as well as increase members. However. We're in the middle of Omicron and you really can't have any activities that might pull people to residence. So it's a bit of a chicken and an egg. The board chair, Ron Haas, as you may know, has moved to Hawaii. So that's being filmed by Jean. There are some other board members that may rotate off. I suggested this will be a challenging year and we can use. I think everybody we can. The good news, Katie Birdstrap, she's a fantastic executive director. And we had a separate conversation regarding, you know, next steps that she plans to try to, you know, rebuild the chamber because that's really where we are, rebuild. And again, some of that's funding and then we're hoping at some point this year, we can actually have some activities and what those activities might be. So the bottom line, they need help. You may or may not be aware, Arinda had a chamber. They no longer have a chamber of camps. So I'd ask everybody, think about the importance of the chamber to Maraga. And I'll stop there and next week I'll talk a little bit more about a twenty twenty two goal and priority in relation to the chamber. And the final item, and since I've done this in my career and continuing in the early retirement here. Interest rates have spiked over the last thirty days, up over thirty basis points. The Fed has announced three or four interest rate increases beginning in March. That's in two months by the end of the year. So that will have a substantial impact on refinancing of our two thousand and thirteen C O P. And again, I'll stop there since that's on the agenda. End of report.
Thank you, Mike. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. So on, on December eighth, the M O F D board. Approved execution of the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection Tunnel East Bay Hills Fuel Break Grant. The value of that grant is six point four million, almost six point four million dollars. And it will establish a tunnel east hill, east bay hills fuel break. And then this is the one that I described on the eighth. That basically will, will encompass about three sides of Maraga. It'll, it'll be a significant enhancement to our. Protection from wildfires coming from the. Open space areas. And so that's a, that's a significant milestone and I, I commend them for that. And I, I think we can all be. Optimistic, optimistic about the results. It's going to take several years to implement that. My other others reported, reporters, I attended the special meeting on. January fifth. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Teresa?
You know, I'm sorry to, to do this, but Steve, I was so intrigued by what you talked about last time with the fire department. I was wondering, and I didn't know when to bring this up since it wouldn't be an agenda item, but I would love to hear a presentation about. What you were just talking about with the fire department and, you know, you talked more about it with maps and everything. So I just wanted to throw that out. And I'm sorry if this is an inappropriate time, but, you know, I thought it was fascinating.
No, it, it, it's a good point. And, and I know we get periodic updates from the chief and I don't know if we're, we're coming up on one of those.
I'll, I'll pursue it with the chief. That's, thank you so much.
Okay, I guess it's, it's my turn. I'll just report a couple of things. Since our last regularly scheduled meeting on December sixteenth, I attended the meeting of the County Connection Board of Directors. And Jim Yu, our appointee to the Citizens Advisory Committee, was confirmed by the board. So Maraga now has a representative. That committee, by the way, is chaired by a very energetic. Member who, whose name escapes me and I'm not sure what jurisdiction she's from, but it sounds like they are. Going to get going and provide the board with very valuable feedback about the on the ground experience of, of bus riders. I attended on the sixth of January, the mayor's conference and. One of the things that we heard was a presentation about the Rosie the Riveter National Memorial and Park. On the Richmond coastline. Now, maybe you guys know about this, but I didn't. And I, I just, if, if folks are looking for something to do with the family on a Sunday afternoon. This is right on the waterfront and it's basically a, a, a park dedicated to telling the story. About the social and economic changes that were initiated by the entry of women like Rosie the Riveter. Into the workforce during World War Two. So I just wanted to, to highlight that that is there for our community's enjoyment. And then on the tenth, I guess this Monday. I attended the meeting of the La Merinda Program Management Committee Board. What we got was an update on the La Merinda Action Plan, which I know I've talked about before, but basically that is the. The, the sort of the transportation, traffic management and alternative transportation plan that is being developed jointly. By Arinda Lafayette and Maraga. It is being done in concert with and in coordination with. The implementation of the Rena allocations by each of the jurisdictions because obviously that will have a significant impact. On the traffic. So. The, the, the two issues I wanted to just share with the council, one is there was a discussion about whether. Evacuation routes should get special consideration in the plan. I was a forceful advocate, yes, because I think that is front and center and everybody's concerns with respect to. You know, the Rena allocations and, and just generally, just, just the housing stock as it, as it exists today. So that feedback was provided. The other thing I wanted to let you know is that this project is being spearheaded by Placeworks, David Early, whom we all know from our Housing Elements. Consultation. I'm sorry, no, M C S P. And they are going to do extensive public outreach and they are actually going to have a special and separate additional session. For La Merinda residents because they know that our, our community is very concerned about this and very engaged and. And, and participatory. So that is going to be happening in the next few months. That is the end of my report. Cynthia?
Good evening. I would like to enter, invite Annie to our new admin services director. Does it turn to please turn on her video? So we're very excited to recruit Annie to our team. She's extremely well qualified. She has an M B A and she actually received her, her B A in accounting. From San Francisco State University, right around the time Norm did. And she has passed the C P A exam. So she has very strong accounting skills. And she has great experience. Most recently, she was a finance director at the city of Alameda. She was also the deputy finance director for city of San Jose, the administrative services director for the city of Hercules and she spent sixteen years. As the administrative services manager and in other positions in the city of Oakland. So we're thrilled to have her on board. And she's, she's got her job cut out for her, but we have a lot of faith for her. And so I'd like to introduce you. Do you want to say anything, Annie?
Sure. Good evening, council members and honorable Mayor Sauce. It's a pleasure to meet all of you via Zoom and Town Manager Cynthia Badenburgh, thank you so much for your confidence in me. I'm so excited to be selected to be your administrative services director. This is my second week with the town and I must say. And I must say, it's been a pleasure working with the team. I had the pleasure of meeting the executive team. And I must say, they are very professional, very experienced and very welcoming. So I'm very excited to be able to serve the town and help with the budget, manage your finances and, you know, manage administrative functions for the town. I feel so fortunate to be able to be part of the team because it looks like the town is very well run by a lot of volunteers, by a lot of great council members, including the leadership. I just feel very fortunate and very humble to be given this opportunity. And I look forward to working with you all, especially on the budget issues, administrative issues, and any, anything that we can do to move the town forward. So thank you so much and I really appreciate this opportunity.
Thank you, Annie. Cynthia, if I may, any council members want to say, any words of welcome? Teresa?
I just want to say, welcome to Maraga. We're so happy you're here. Thank you.
Thank you. I, believe me, the pleasure is mine. Every day I drive to work, I, I'm in awe of how wonderful the town is.
Mike?
Yeah, I just want to say, welcome too. And your timing is perfect. This is the year that we have more funding than we've ever had. And we're going to have some fun choices this year.
Yes, that's why I'm so excited. I feel privileged to be able to serve and work with all of you.
Yeah, likewise. Welcome.
Thank you.
It's great to have you here.
So do you want to say anything?
I just, I love the energy. That's, that's exactly what we need to.
Yeah, I was so excited when I was offered the job. I couldn't thank Cynthia enough.
Well, Annie, let me just add my, my welcome. We look forward to working with you as well. This council loves the financial side of the house, so.
Oh, I'm sure. I know we have a lot of expertise in the house. So that's great. I welcome your expert advice.
Okay, well, thank you. Okay, Cynthia, thanks.
Right. And I also want to make sure everybody marks their calendar for the Canyon Road Bridge opening. It is going to open to two-way traffic next week, January twentieth at ten AM. Our Public Works Department is busy working on a reception. There'll be speeches and a ribbon cutting and photo ops and some refreshments. And parking's going to be available for the public on Camino Pablo. It's open to everybody. Everybody's invited to attend. We're following all the COVID protocols. And this really, I just want to say that this is really the aesthetic, or this is really the opening of the bridge to two-way traffic. There are quite a few of the aesthetic improvements that still need to be made. So we will continue to work on those. But we're super excited to be delivering this, this bridge to two-way traffic. It's a huge accomplishment. I would be remiss if I didn't say the largest public works project in the history of the town. So that's pretty exciting. We are, we are also accepting applications for all of the boards and commissions. So get busy council members out there recruiting and inspiring people to serve on our boards or commissions. We need, we need volunteers. So we appreciate that. I also wanted, let's see, I have a couple more things. Okay, so our Bible program is at fifty-two hundred dollars. Our goal is six thousand dollars. So we're looking for another eight hundred dollars in donations. So you can go online and make a donation. And then the project, we have quite a bit of work going on at the Hacienda right now. The ADA project for the patio and the fountain area and the pathways is underway. So they've moved and relocated the fountain. And there's also all the work going on by Wedgewood inside the property. We're thinking that there'll be some kind of an open house in early April. Very excited about that. We also have ongoing meetings for community outreach for the housing element. So that's continuing. And we also are having a challenge right now with graffiti and vandalism issues. So we are looking for information from people. Anything, if anybody sees anything suspicious, if anybody has any information on their security cameras, please call the Maraga Police Department with that, that information. And that is the end of my report.
Steve and then Mike.
Cynthia, is the graffiti damaging, is it in a particular area in town? Or, and focused on the town facilities or in general?
We're seeing it all over the town. Steve, it's everything from the skate park. If you notice the construction sign that they were, they had it had up for the West Commons Trail Project right there. We had graffiti on there, the outhouse, the construction crew was using the flexible bollard in front of Joaquin Maraga's school that has the crosswalk warning on it, the for lease sign in front of Ream Center. I mean, the, the one in particular has been all over town. You may have seen it. It's S O A Z is this little moniker. So we're, we're out looking, we're checking camera footage and trying to, if we can nail down days and times, that'll, that'll really, really give us, give us a better idea. And hopefully we'll find some video footage of this.
Okay, thank you.
I won't use the descriptive word I was thinking of, but.
In the back of the Ream Theater too, right?
Exactly. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the back of the Ream Center. They actually, he actually even hit a, I say he, it could be a, a woman also. But it hit one of St. Mary's Public Safety Vehicles on campus. So.
Okay, Mike?
Yeah, thank you. So great news on the Canyon Bridge. I just want to clarify, last time the council members were given an opportunity to speak, I don't care if, it can just be the mayor. I just want to know if the opportunity is there or not.
Yeah. So we have four people lined up to speak. Mayor Sauce, Supervisor Anderson, a representative from Caltrans, and the President of the CCTA Board. So those will be our speakers. And then, but there will be a ribbon cutting and we absolutely want you to be there for the ribbon cutting.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
All right. Anything else, Cynthia?
No, that is the end of my report. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Okay, next agenda item, public hearings. A Model Water Efficiency Landscaping Ordinance. I hereby open the public hearing. And as I understand how we'll do this is we'll have a staff report, council member questions, public comments, then discussion. Okay, Afshah, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. First, I want to acknowledge Mio Mendez. He's our Assistant Planner and he is serving tonight. He's doing dual duty tonight. He is serving as our Marty McIntyre and running the Zoom tonight, and he is also making a presentation. So thank you, Mio. So a brief introduction on MWLO. This is called the Model Water Efficiency Landscape Ordinance. And it has been a state mandate since 2015. It is now being implemented due to Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three, which relates to recycling procurement and composting. And composting is directly related to MWLO. The purpose of MWLO is simple. Conserve water, protect resources, and make good practices in landscaping, irrigation, and composting. MWLO is part of the town's Climate Action Plan. And it has been a town goal for 2022. And we are bringing it forward now due to the requirements of Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three. I would like to add a clarification, which came through the public records request. And that is the documentation for MWLO. In the staff report, it does state that we submitted to the Department of Water Resources annual reports since 2015. As we have gone back, we have, we want to clarify that staff submitted reports in 2019 and 2020. The 2019 report may have been dislodged because DWR, Department of Water Resources, was switching systems at that time electronically. So we are going back and tracing that report. Twenty twenty was submitted. And the prior years, we are trying to get clarifications, but we don't think that they were submitted. And many of, many cities and jurisdictions have been in the same predicament. We are going to be submitting the 2021 report in about a month or so. So that will be submitted. And I will allow Mio Mendez, Assistant Planner, to make the presentation. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, everybody. I'm going to be sharing my screens. Give me a moment here to have this all set up. All right, can everybody see this? All right.
We did for a minute, but now we can't. And now it looks like we're seeing your home screen.
How about now?
We had thought for a minute there.
This form? My apologies. There are some technical difficulties as I do have to use multiple screens to both run the meeting and try to give this presentation. You know, as Director Hamid stated, my name is Mio Mendez. I am the Town's Assistant Planner. And tonight we will be going over the Model Water Efficient Landscaping Ordinance. Just to give a quick overview of what will be going over tonight. First, we'll be going over the request, some ordinance background, some discussion items, some CEQA requirements and staff's recommendation. So the request. So the request is to consider waiving the first reading and introducing by title only an ordinance amending Title VIII Planning and Zoning, establishing Chapter eight point one seven eight, the Model Water Efficient Landscaping Ordinance in order to require water efficient landscaping design and irrigation practices consistent with the requirements of the state of California.
Excuse me, Mio?
Yes.
Would you please allow me to share my screen so I can share the PowerPoint? And I can advance? So if you can allow me to share my screen, that would be great. Okay, let's try this. Done. Move you. Just a moment. I'm bringing it up. Can you see the screen?
No.
So you're going to have to request a share.
Okay.
We can see it now, Afshah.
We can see it now.
Okay, and hold on, let me just start. Is that good?
Perfect.
And I will advance.
All right, and here we are. Just to get back to it, this is the ordinance background. MWLO was originally created in nineteen ninety-three and it was a part of the nineteen ninety Water Conservation and Landscaping Act. However, in 2015, through Governor Brown, he placed Executive Order B dash twenty-nine dash fifteen, which tasked the Department of Water Resources to update the MWLO regulations to increase water efficiency standards for new and existing landscapes through more efficient irrigation systems, gray water usage, onsite stormwater capture, and by limiting the portion of landscapes that can be covered by turf. And then, as Director Hamid stated, in 2016, Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three was passed. It's the California Short-lived Climate Pollution Reduction Law, which required MWLO to be adopted and enforced in 2022. With that being said, MWLO can be found in California Code of Regulations Title twenty-two three, Division two, Chapter two point seven, and Section six five five nine five of the California Government Code. Next screen. All right, so the requirements for MWLO, new construction projects, it's an aggregate landscape equal to or greater than five hundred square feet for new construction. New construction is, is any new building with a landscape or other new landscapes such as parks, playgrounds, or greenbelt, or rehabilitated landscape projects. It's landscapes, landscape areas equal to or greater than two hundred, two thousand five hundred square feet of rehabilitated landscape. Any re-landscaping project that requires a permit, plan check, or design review and the modified landscape area, which would include all those planting areas would trigger MWLO. Next slide. During the Planning Commission on January fourth, 2022, the Planning Department did bring this ordinance to their, to the Planning Commission for their review. It was approved seven to zero. However, there were two requested clarification points during the meeting. The first point of clarification was regarding the type of projects that include the installation of new irrigation features of five hundred square feet or more that fall under MWLO. The question specifically was regarding if an individual was to install five, new five hundred square feet of irrigation, purely just irrigation, would it trigger MWLO? And we gained some clarification on that. And it's through the installation of irrigation on a pre-existing landscape would not trigger MWLO. MWLO is only triggered on landscapes with pre-existing landscape when a project proposes twenty-five hundred square feet of modified landscaping project area as part of a permit, plan check, or design review. The second point of clarification that popped up during the Planning Commission meeting was regarding the Stormwater Control Plan C three guidance. And the only issue there was, was the planning commissioners were questioning whether MWLO triggered C three or vice versa. And MWLO only applies to landscape areas while C three is the threshold considered for all impervious surfaces. So their relationship is kind of intermingled. But they are both separate regulations. Next slide. And for CEQA purposes, the proposed municipal code amendments are exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, Public Resources Code, Section twenty-one thousand, and CEQA pursuant to Public Resources Code, Section two one zero eight zero point one seven, and CEQA Guidelines, Section one five two eight two H. Next slide. And it's staff recommendation that the town council consider waiving the first reading and introducing by title only an ordinance establishing Chapter eight point one seven eight of the Model Water Efficient Landscaping of Title VIII Planning and Zoning. in order to require water efficient landscaping design and irrigation practices consistent with the recommendation, or with, excuse me, the requirements of the state of California, with the sequel determination exempt pursuant to sequel guideline, Section 15061B-3, which is the general rule exemption. And that is my presentation. Last slide.
Thank you, Mio. If we can take the slides down, please. All right, council member questions? Sona.
Thank you for the presentation. So I just wanted to clarify about, clarify about timing. So what I'm hearing is that since the last MWLO report was submitted, the regulatory landscape has shifted in that as of January 1, we have this new, these new onerous requirements that Cal Recycling is putting more onerous requirements around composting and organic waste. And that is SB 1383. So SB 1383 is saying you, that we need to have, that all towns and cities need to have this type of ordinance in place. And so that's the, the reason why the priority to, to, to pass this today. Can, is that a correct summary of the timing and the prioritization?
So SB 1383 is, is triggering the implementation of MWLO, yes.
And you're, you actually are going to see more items on SB 1383. We'll have, be having somebody come from
Recycle Smart.
Recycle Smart. At that April meeting, we have some mandatory requirements for purchasing recycled paper, and we have some building code changes related to ensuring that there's sufficient space in multifamily and commercial properties for recycling enclosures. So you're going to see some more on this, but this is the first piece that we're bringing to you. And the next pieces that we'll bring will kind of tell a little bit more of the whole story.
Right, and this is a, this is one piece to get into compliance.
Yes, and if I may, Councilmember Macar, I'd add that you are correct, that SB 1383 regulations, which were adopted by Cal Recycle, for the most part became effective January 1, 2022, and part of the regulations require cities and counties to, among other things, adopt an enforceable mechanism, either a resolution or in this case, an ordinance, which include the MWLO standards. And if you look at Cal Recycle model ordinance that they've put out for various jurisdictions as a template to follow, included in that model ordinance in Section 14 are the MWLO requirements. And so you can see in that model ordinance, they basically cut and paste the MWLO into their model ordinance. And that's something that jurisdictions have to follow.
Thank you. Mike, I see, I see your hand. You're on mute, Mike.
I had a similar question on time, so I thought I'd jump in. So I, I know this triggered, but when's the actual due date for this? Do I mean, do we have to the end of the year, or what's our due date?
Jurisdictions were to have adopted some type of enforceable mechanism by January 1.
Okay, so we're late.
Yes, as, as many jurisdictions are. So there are many jurisdictions that are trying to, you know, get into conformance with SB 1383. The regulations came somewhat late and are very onerous, and so many jurisdictions are sort of trying to get into compliance as quickly as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Steve.
Thank you, Mayor. So what are the consequences of a jurisdiction to sort of ignore this? Do we know what those consequences are?
So on the MWLO side, i- in terms of SB 1383, Cal Recycle regulations do have penalty provisions. So if a jurisdiction doesn't come into compliance with SB 1383 and its various requirements, Cal Recycle can enforce those requirements. They have minor penalties, which start at about, I think, $500, and they go up to major penalties, which come with a penalty of up to $10,000. So depending on the violation, Cal Recycle could impose a penalty somewhere between $500 and $10,000.
Is there an award for being the last one to adopt?
No, but there is, there is some legislative relief. The state, the governor signed SB 619 at the end of last year, and so if jurisdictions can avoid penalties if they are having trouble coming into compliance by applying for relief through SB 619.
I, I guess, you know, I keep hearing, and you know, I happen to attend the remotely, of course, the Planning Commission meeting on this. And are there incentives? Because you hear a lot of references to onerous requirements, and what I've heard are, you know, pretty onerous.
So may I, may I respond, council member?
Sure.
So you know, first, in terms of jurisdictions adopting this, we are at the same place that Lafayette and Arinda are. So they're also going through a similar process to adopt MWLO. And I have worked for two jurisdictions, Concord and Vallejo, that were, that have adopted this. And basically, you know, there's a process that we put in place, and we do it right at the application process. And we require landscaping anyways. So when landscaping or civil drawings are submitted, we just ask for certification, self-certification. So it's not really onerous. It's just part of the process, and it's just verification.
I, I thought I heard that, you know, it was going to have to be certified by a licensed landscape architect, and there are going to be certain requirements with regard to assessing permeability of the, of the land and
Yeah, if it's triggered for a certain square footage of project, which most single-family homes do not do anyways. So most of these applications are for much larger projects or commercial projects, or if it's like a brand-new subdivision. So those have professional architects and civil engineers employed regardless.
Well, so, so help me understand then, if, if someone is putting in a new home and they put in 800 or 1,000 square feet of, of landscaping, aren't they going to be subject to those same requirements?
So if it's a new home, and they are required to put landscaping in, they're also required to do civil. So it's part of the review anyways.
So I, I as part of civil, they're going to have to do the permeability work anyways, is what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah.
I, I'm not familiar with the details.
Yeah, all it's asking to do is just, you know, do smart things like put in native plants or drought-tolerant plants, or to group low-water usage plants together, medium-water usage plants together, and high-water usage plants together, use composting, use best practices for irrigation, which I think a lot of professionals are doing now anyways.
Any other questions, Steve?
No, thank you very much.
Okay, any other council member questions? I, I have, I have a couple. So I, and I think Steve alluded to this, and Afshah, I think you did as well. So in terms of the, the, just your, your, your typical Maraga homeowner, this really has no impact.
Right, I mean, unless you're doing like a brand-new home, or you're doing a large addition, which then you would need civil drawings for anyways.
So and I'm sorry to interrupt, but, but so after, if I'm understanding correctly, these requirements basically are are implemented in the permitting process, so, so right, so this would be, these are, these are things that, that require permits for whatever reason, and, and, and where applicable or where we MWLO is triggered, that it would go into the permitting, these requirements go into the permitting process. Is that, is that, do I have that right?
So these are already in place. These have been in place since 2015. So we're just basically securing this through our processes. And we're required to do it, we've been required to do it annually. So it's a report that we submit, and we put it into place as part of our, our review.
And then in terms of, of the enforcement, because I, I know this has come up, but, but basically, as I, tell me if I'm correct, as I understand SB 1383, it does have some, a, a whole enforcement regime that is going to be implemented across the board and includes, you know, the composting and, and all, all of this. But there are some real teeth now where those may not have existed before. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and we will, is it correct also, Cynthia and Afshah, that we will learn more about this when Recycle Smart comes to present to us on what they are doing to help us comply with SB 1383?
That's correct. Yes, that's correct, and we will, like I indicated, we have two other items. In addition to their presentation, we will have two other items at least coming to the council related to SB 1383. One that has to do with recycled paper content, recycle content of paper, and the other one that has to do with building code updates.
Right, because, because my, my understanding, just for the benefit of my fellow council members, is, and Teresa knows this, is one of the the benefits that we get for participating in the Joint Powers Authority that is Recycle Smart, is that Recycle Smart is doing the heavy lifting on making sure that all of the jurisdictions that participated in Recycle Smart are in SB 1383 compliance. So they're providing the ordinance, that, I mean, there's, there's a whole package of things that they're providing for, for our benefit, and we'll learn more about that when they come to present.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I guess I should, we should not lose the message by focusing on the process. And the message is that all Maraga residents, including multifamily residents, are now offered composting services as our, and collection, as our commercial businesses. So that's really, that is the work that Recycle Smart's doing, and they'll be talking more about that, and and that's why we're upgrading our building code to make sure that any new buildings accommodate that, and then they're also addressing this kind of creation of markets for some of the recycled products. So it is a pretty comprehensive Senate bill.
Okay. Any other council member questions? All right, so I'll close the questions and open public comment. Public comment and open, I see a hand raised, Linda DeChambeau. Please come one in. And you have three minutes, Linda.
Hi there. Good evening, honorable members, council members. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you for bringing this overdue item into compliance. Yes, it's been around since 2015, and I'm happy that the implementation now is upon the town to complete it. A lot of cities have done this for a number of years. We do an annual report. I'm, oh gosh, I'm losing track, 30-something-year resident in Maraga, and the Executive Director of Contra Costa Climate Leaders. We do an annual report, and Maraga ranks number 13 out of 19 when it comes to water usage when we look at the DWR reports. So what concerns me throughout the document that you have before you, although I'm excited, you're putting it and giving it attention, is every single item talks about consider or encourage, and it really never gets to any measurable requirements, which most other cities do. So it'd be great if Maraga might consider going beyond just the window dressing of putting something in place to meet the ordinance and consider, changing consider to require. And I mean, this is something we've asked for decades. We asked for this for the Palace Colorado's development. We asked for these types of savings and landscaping when we did the specific plan. You know, we have periodic workshops at Contra Costa Climate Leaders, and there's great opportunity to be more proactive like some of the other cities. If you go to our website, you'll see, you know, Martinez has really done a fabulous job. Even conservative places out in Antioch have a recycled water project. Cities are requiring purple pipe in all new development. So why flush our toilets and water our yards with water that's been cleaned up to water standards? If we're really going to do a water savings and water ordinance, we can look to Concord, San Pablo have all done that. El Cerrito renovated their entire San Pablo Avenue to do that. San Ramon even is a drought management ordinance. The list goes on and on, and all of them are listed on our, our website. So not only would I encourage you to proceed with this this evening, but I really would ask that you start getting rid of words like encourage and consider, and start working on requiring and shall and should, because we have a lot of future generations relying on us to make sure we address the climate crisis and the sustainability of our beautiful town of Maraga. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Linda. Any other public comment on this item? I see no hands. Okay, so I will close public comment. Councilmember comments? Anyone want to start? Teresa?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Renata and I both have been at many meetings with Contra Costa Solid Waste Authority where they've been talking about 1383. And so I'm delighted that it has come to this council and that we will be hearing from Contra Costa Solid Waste Authority. You know, the whole, the whole council will hear what they have to say. And I think that this is moving in the right direction, and I'm, I will be looking at the Martinez water, water safety, or whatever it is, to see what they're doing, because I think, I think we, we can probably always do more. You know, the question is, how much is it going to cost, and how long does it take, and so on and so forth. So I think we're moving in the right direction, and thank you, Linda, for speaking.
Other comments? Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm a bit conflicted, to be honest with you, because any time new regulations are implemented, I'm, I'm wary of that. You know, we seem to be a society now that is pretty by many, by, you know, many people believe we're over-regulated. On the other hand, I, I certainly do advocate for water conservation. So I'm, you know, having listened to the, the Planning Commission approving this by reference is something I can, I can live with. Even though I, I wonder whether, how many people are going to build a new home and put in 45 square feet of landscaping as part of the permitting process, or, or do a, you know, renovation of landscaping and keep it under 2,500 square feet, but you know, there, there's value in it. Thank you.
Sona?
I appreciated the clarification that, you know, the MWLO guidelines, it's not as onerous as, you know, maybe I had initially thought at the outset of, of the, the discussion, so that helps me better understand the impact on the average homeowner. And, you know, it does sound like SB 1383 has quite a few requirements, and we're going to hear about that. But again, that's something that collectively, you know, will impact all, all town, all jurisdictions equally. So I am also comfortable moving forward with this today.
Mike, do you have any comments?
Uh, yeah, I was, I was going to pass. It's just actually, it's, it's just, to me, it's the, it's unfortunate this comes to one of our busiest areas in Afshah's department, because I know how much time the housing element's taking. So that's why I was hoping there was more latitude on the timing so we could push this to a, a lower priority. But I, I think it made the case, most homers, most homeowners will not be impacted. We do need to do this, so let's move forward.
All right. Any other comments? Would someone like to make a motion? Teresa?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that we conduct a public hearing and consider waiving the first reading and introducing by title only an ordinance amending Title VIII.
an ordinance amending Title Eight, Planning and Zoning, Establishing Chapter Eight, One, or eight dot one, seven, eight. A Model Water Efficient Landscaping Ordinance in order to require water efficient landscaping, design and irrigation practices consistent with the requirements of the state of California.
Thank you. The title, and we have, we have a motion and a second. All right, roll call vote. Councilmember Macor?
Yes.
Councilmember Onoda?
Yes.
Councilmember McClure?
Yes.
Okay, Vice Mayor Walaki?
You're muted.
Yes, yes.
And Mayor Sauce says yes, that it's unanimously approved. Thank you, staff. Uh, would, would the council appreciate a five-minute break right now before we get into the next agenda item?
Sure.
Yes.
Yes, let's do that. So let's reconvene at eight oh six. Thanks, everyone. All right, I think everyone's back. Mio, are you ready to go?
All right, give me a moment here.
Okay, thank you.
And we should be ready to go.
All right, thank you. We're ba- back on the record. Uh, we're now on Agenda Item Ten, Ordinances, Resolutions and Requests for Action. Item A is uh to receive a report and discuss, so this is not an action item. The Town of Maraga's strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats analysis. Staff report.
Yes, good evening, council. Um, each year prior to your goal-setting um discussion item, I'd like to consider what information might be useful for the council. And uh last year, as you may recall, we had a update on what was happening with planning, because we were really trying to get our arms around everything that was required and put together a plan, and as a result of that, uh, you did set some items on your goal, and we end up, ended up with the Advanced Planning Initiative. We also um presented to you information, Director Knapp, regarding the five-year um CIP project planning, which was implemented as part of the budget. So um this year, um, I thought that a strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats analysis might be of interest to the council. So uh your executive team, which are the Department Directors of myself, uh got together, got together, and I just wanted to give you some information about your executive team. Your executive team has over a hundred and eighty-two years of experience working for municipal agencies. That we've worked for more than twenty public agencies, plus consultants and private businesses, and worked at least seventy-five thousand hours for the town of Maraga. So this is our report to you, and it's for your information only. So let me, I have, um, can I share my? Oh, hold on a second. Oopsie. Mio, can I share my presentation, please, or Mayor?
You should have the ability to share your.
Okay. Great. So I'm gonna um assume that you have read the report, and I won't go into a lot of detail. I just want you to have the opportunity to ask questions. But in terms of the strengths of the community, it's, it's funny, because when I came here, people are like, well, w- we need, we need to do a marketing study, and we need to know who we are, and what is, what is Maraga known for? And it was so clear to me, and I think that, um, you know, basically Maraga has great schools. We have great schools at every level. We have great elementary schools, great middle schools. We have an amazing high school, and we're home to St. Mary's College, and many cities would like the opportunities to be a college town. It's a huge asset. And the other thing that we're really known for is our open space and our parks and our recreational programs. And before I came to Maraga, I can tell you that I used to always uh take the Lafayette Maraga Trail with my family up to Commons Park and spend the day there. It was a great fun day for us and our kids, so um, those are absolutely strengths, and that's why we hear people, why um people move to Maraga. We have a bunch of other strengths. We do have a highly educated community and a high average household income. These are strong demographics. Um, and even though years ago we did have some financial challenges, um, we have a really strong financial foundation. So the state Auditor's Office ranks the four hundred and seventy-one California cities annually in terms of their financial risk, and they consider things such as our general fund reserves, the amount of debt, and um there's a lot of cons- um consideration of pension, including like other um post-benefit pension obligations, which we don't have any. And I think it's important to note that Maraga is in the top thirteen percent in terms of low financial risk, which means that eighty-seven percent of the cities in the state are at a higher financial risk. I think that that's a strength. We also have a really stable revenue base. Now, we, we don't have a huge revenue base. Um, we have uh over fifty percent of our revenue comes from property taxes. And interestingly, property taxes in history have only decreased or slid back one time, a very slight amount during the Great Recession over that extended period of time. It's a very stable rate uh revenue base, and it's been increasing about five percent per year. Um, these other items, accurate and transparent financial records, that information is available. All our information is online. We have the lowest cost police services per capita in Contra Costa County, and we have a very low crime rate. Maraga is um regularly voted one of the safest cities to live, which is uh really a great benefit. We have a town attorney with significant institutional knowledge, and this is really important to staff as we try to navigate some of the things that have happened historically with the town, because we know that the town attorney who's been here for thirty years can be dependent upon to kind of help steer us in the right direction when we're looking for information or wondering why something occurred. We have incredibly active community groups. We have a lot of volunteerism. That's fantastic. And um we, we believe that the staff is very hardworking and dedicated. There's a real focus on customer service. And the executive team, we are incredibly collaborative. I think we're creative in our approach to solutions. And um that makes it a great place to work. In terms of weaknesses, um definitely one of our weaknesses is our financial uh revenue opportunities. We, we only receive five point three percent of property tax revenues. There are cities that easily receive eighteen or twenty-two percent of property tax revenue, and a lot of this has to do just with historically, because we became a, we incorporated as a town in nineteen seventy-four, and four years later, when we hadn't even fully ramped up operations, Prop thirteen came in and basically froze the way the property tax pie was distributed. Our percentage was five point three percent, so that's what we receive. We also have very minimal staffing levels, and this makes it very difficult to get regular work done, to work on special projects. And um I think that we suffer a lot from um employee burnout and employee turnover. Um, we're having a, a lot of challenges. Um, I thought we did a great job with the administrative services recruitment. I worked really hard um on succession planning and brought in Annie, and lo and behold, we got a resignation from our accountant, and that is the number two in command who carries a lot of the knowledge. And um so all of a sudden, we're scrambling, because we don't um have that capacity. Um, we have an ongoing loss of institutional knowledge. Many jurisdictions have very large departments, and so there's more people kind of holding that institutional knowledge when you only have three or four people. Um, there's just a lot more turnover. Uh, we also have unfunded pension liability. This is not liability that we're incurring now. We are paying um our way now, but this is a past liability. It's um over seven million dollars a year. We'll be paying it off over the next uh twenty years. Um, and then based on um our traffic uh situation, uh, we don't, we're not close to public tran- transit. We're considered a high resource area. It does make it difficult for us to attract money for some of the infrastructure grants out there. We're just not competitive. Um, as you know, we have aging infrastructure, storm drains, streets, our buildings that are in need of repair and maintenance, and we have a lack of adequate evacuation routes for emergencies and disasters. And I know that police and fire are working hard on this issue, but being a kind of semi-rural community, we um are um, we don't have very uh wide roads in and out of town. So I, I really want to focus a little bit tonight on kind of what we identified as the opportunities for you to consider for possible goals in twenty twenty-two. So first, I just want to say that that design on, in the top right corner, many of you might not have seen it, that's Palace Colorado's. So uh we went and got those old plans out. Um, and um that's what the uh site is designed to look like up there on the top of um by Sky High, and you can actually see this bottom part here. You can see, these are kind of where the natural trails are. So there's multiple areas where kind of that are trailheads. So um in considering the opportunity, um, we thought that um given um some capacity that we have with um Wedgwood taking over our events, that our Parks and Rec Director could lead us in uh developing a um townwide recreation and open space plan. And why, why this is relevant at this point in time is we just did receive another two point two five million dollar payment from Palace Colorado's. So we have over four million dollars in that account, and we'll be receiving more um as the General Fan Fund pays back its loan, and there's additional funding on its way, and we don't really have a plan for it. So uh development of a strategic plan for those fees would really help the town in prioritizing kind of what some of the future opportunities are. There's been a lot of talk about it, but it's always been kind of in the future, and I think that um the development of this plan is probably, you know, a two-year uh project, so um, you know, we don't know exactly when um the developer will be moving forward, but it would be a nice to have a plan when it does move forward. Um, and so we have many different studies out there that we can draw upon. We have the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, the Maraga Commons Park Specific Plan. We have the Hacienda Conceptual Feasibility Study. We know, um, so we could look at those things. We know that there's a need for fields in the town. Um, I think that there's a huge opportunities for uh trails and um connecting Palace Colorado's and Painted Rocks, and the Bella Vista Gad could be an exciting kind of trail project. Um, there has been conversation about use of Palace Colorado's funds for um and uh for funding some unfunded pension liabilities. And um also, one of the things that needs to be considered is of that funding that's coming in, that's in lieu of any development impact fees. But we haven't really calculated what the development impact But we haven't really calculated what the development impact fees would be, so it would be interesting to know, well, how much of that really would we be setting aside for that? So this is just an opportunity for you to consider whether that's something you'd want to move forward with. We're not defining the project, you know. Um, it would be a similar process where if you decided you wanted to make it a goal, then we consider a path forward and bring it to you for discussion. Um, so that's one of the, the projects that we identified. And then I think that there's also the opportunity now for increased public outreach and community engagement. We have not, until this point in time, we've really been able to commit the ongoing resources to having um kind of more frequent posts and um distribution of our About Town newsletter as well as more active um involvement in social media with just some of the things that are happening in the, in the town. So um we have the um opportunity to work on our um public outreach and engagement. Um, so those are the two, those are the two possible projects. I can give you more information if you want, but they're really just conceptual at this time. And then I wanted to bring uh to your attention some of the opportunities that we see as kind of future funding opportunities and give you an idea about the timing when you're gonna just, when you'll be able to, you know, discuss this, or when it would be appropriate for you to discuss this. So we do have the four point two million in American Rescue Plan Act, or what we call ARPA funds. And um that funding, we, we thought we were gonna get three point six million. So this year's budget really starts um allocating that three point six million dollars to mainly storm drain repair projects, because that was what the um interim rule indicated that the funds could be used for. And we were busy kind of calculating our revenue loss. Well, on Thursday, January sixth, when we released the staff report, the final rule came out from the Department of Treasury. And the rule is that uh because there were so many challenges with calculating what that revenue loss was, they did things like instead, you had to calculate it based on calendar year instead of fiscal year, and it was just very confusing. But basically, the federal government indicated ten million dollar across the board. Everybody gets that as revenue loss, and then after that, you'll have to report it. So that really kind of changes at least the rules by whereby we, the town can use the ARPA funds. That doesn't mean that the council um wants to change how you've prioritized use of our funds, because we obviously had a huge funding shortfall in our storm drain system. So anyway, timing-wise, um our expenditure plan is due to um this, the government by April thirtieth. And we're hoping to bring something to you for discussion at the end of February, beginning of March. So that's the timing there. We also have um funding for the Advanced Planning Initiative. And I wrote here Phase Two, but I realized there's, there's a little bit of distinction I want to make. We have next year's funding of a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars for the Advanced Planning Initiative, which includes uh any contingency funds as well as legal costs associated with that study. And then we have um, I think, three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars in Phase Two costs, which would be in twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four, twenty-five. And those costs are related to actually finishing the general plan update. So we'll be doing, I don't know, seventy-five, eighty percent of the general plan update, and that would be the cost of completing it to ensure that we meet that requirement of having an updated general plan, and all of our documents are internally aligned. Otherwise, um we do have some challenges. So that will be something that you can consider as part of your uh budget, next year's budget, whether you want to fully fund that next year, or, you know, just uh fund the uh twenty-two, twenty-three completion of uh Phase One. Um, another funding consideration will be refinancing of the twenty thirteen certificates of participation. And really, this is set to be done in April twenty twenty-three when they're callable. So um we will put that uh assumption in next year's uh budget if you decide you want to move forward with that project. But we are assuming that uh based on past uh uh input from the council, that's something that you want to do. We also have a consideration of implementation of any facility generation and energy efficiency study recommendations um that can be handled as part of next year's budget. And then um basically, a discussion of future allocation of Measure K General Fund revenue for other unfunded infrastructure needs. Not necessarily as part of next year's budget, because really, for the next two years, we have the funding of the Worst First Streets approach um to get those poor and very poor streets reconstructed. But a discussion after that time, whether part of the funding may be appropriate for storm drains or other unfunded infrastructure needs could be a future funding opportunity. And again, let me just say that that's really based on the fact that Measure K assumed one million dollar revenue to fix the town's streets and roads. We are currently receiving two point four million dollars a year. And in addition to that, we have three hundred thousand dollars of gas tax funds as well as over eight hundred thousand dollars in garbage vehicle franchise fees. So we have three and a half times more funding for our streets than we uh uh than the town projected when that measure was passed. But that's a future decision. That doesn't need to be made at that time, but it's an opportunity. Um, numerous other opportunities. Some of these are really underway. We have been uh increasing our legal and planning collaboration on land use issues significantly more discussions early on strategically about how we're moving forward, so that we make sure that we're um coordinating uh our efforts. Um, we're also uh have some opportunities to look at how to use technology to continue to increase our efficiency. One of the things that we want to look at is possible uh kind of city clerk or clerk software systems to streamline the agenda management pos- uh process. We're always continuing to look at uh opportunities to either in-source or outsource, depending on what the project is. We're doing both. Um, there's an opportunity that I'll let you guys decide if you want to discuss about increasing the efficiency of town council meetings. There's always an opportunity to do more succession planning, uh although it's been very challenging, as I indicated. Um, I, I think that there's an opportunity to increase Saint Mary's College integration with the town. It's something that's been talked about, town down relations for um a long time in terms of getting the students more involved in the community um and um allowing and introducing the community more to the art and performance and music and sporting events at Saint Mary's College. Um, two of the other things um in terms of opportunities, we'll be doing labor negotiations and updating the personnel rules this year. And we're also um working on a project to improve our broadband connection and replace our um our, I don't, I don't know what VPN uh with a cloud-based system, and I don't even know what VPN stands for. Um, but basically, just improving our access to information and um helping to stabilize our um systems, especially for emergencies. So those are the opportunities. In terms of threats, um I think that you're aware of most of these things. We've got our aging infrastructure. We have our increasing cost and scope of fire abatement work. There is a fire abatement study that um is just getting underway, so we'll have some of that information for next year's budget. We have continuing unfunded legislative mandates specifically related to public safety and planning that impact our ability to um provide timely service and our cost of providing service. So that we're continuing to um struggle with as we have more and more requirements. Um, employee attraction and retention is really hard right now. Um, we made an offer to somebody, and their city manager went in and scooped, scooped them back up and offered them a job, and it's happening quite frequently now. Um, we have the great resignation taking place. Um, and um employee retention is, is challenging. Um, we have, I, I want, I, I've been hearing five point nine. I think I just heard seven percent today. Inflation is high. That's increasing our cost of goods and services. Um, we also have this kind of ongoing volatility of, of CalPERS. They change their assumptions, their rates of returns change. Um, and it means that it's very unpredictable what our future pension obligations are. We don't have a lot of control over that. Um, we also have an increasingly litigious community. I mean, it's just in, in the, um, I don't, I don't know. I don't, I don't know if it's outside of California, but people are just more litigious. So there's um a lot of um issues with, that are um attempted to be resolved with legal actions, a lot of threats. We also have a uh what we call a highly politicized development environment, NIMBYism and other concerns um making development challenging. We have um all these state mandates and the loss of local control over land use, which is a huge threat to um the way that I think Maragans want to keep Maraga in terms of being a really semi-rural community. And then we have challenges with misinformation regarding town business. Um, and and then that's the end of my report. Sorry to end it on kind of a bad note with the threats, but I, I, I really hope, you know, the idea is for you to understand what some of the, what the staff believes some of the opportunities are for the discussion and for us to provide you that in, this information for your consideration as part of your goal setting. And so that is the end of my presentation. And I'm here, as are all of the other executive team members, to answer any questions that you might have.
Thanks, Cynthia. Um, so we'll take council member questions, then we'll um open a public comment. And then we will have council member comments, again, understanding that we're, that there's no action tonight. Or even uh we're not even being asked to provide directions, simply, simply discussion. So um council member questions, Teresa.
Thank you. Um, Cynthia, I've got a question about the first one under opportunities, increased legal planning collaboration on land use issues. Could you, could you kind of flesh that out a little bit?
Yes, so um we are uh working um proactively with uh Burke Williams on planning applications when they come in, so that we don't continue, the planning department doesn't continue to process the information or the applications, and at the end, then realize that there are challenges that have happened or um uh expose us to potential litigation. So we're doing that work strategically upfront and really having an understanding about, a better understanding about what are, what the legal obligations are, and then what some of the um options are. So a lot more strategizing. Um, we'll be bringing some items to the council for your consideration as we move through some of these more challenging applications that we have right now. But it's, it's really getting planning, getting public works, getting legal, all in the same room and talking initially. Well, if we go down this path, what happens here? What about this? And trying to figure out how um we can help bring the best project forward.
So to follow up, is that different than how it's been done in the past?
I believe that there's been more of a reactive approach, planning with and process the applications, and then there might have been some issues, and then we brought legal in and because we wanted to save money upfront, right? We didn't want to bring legal in and pay legal fees, which is, you know, legal doesn't go to a lot of the planning commission meetings. But at this point in time, like what we did with the, um, what we're doing with the housing element update in Bullinger Valley is as opposed to having planning run through the whole thing and then bring legal in at the end and bring up issues. Karen is part of our team, and we're all working strategically so that we move forward, and we don't have any surprises. And I think it's working better, and we're doing that with, like I said, with the housing element and Bullinger Valley.
Other questions? Mike?
Yeah, thank you. Um, so in terms of the uh SWAT, thank you um very much for that information. So that was staff. Did they have any other inputs, community groups, anything like that?
No, this is not a um assignment or that we were given by the council. This is something that we just wanted to offer you based on our experience. And I'm sure that if the council did it, you might have different um uh some, some different ideas. And if the community did it, they might have different perspectives as well. But as your executive team members who run the operations of the town, these are our insights based on our experience, education, and time with the town.
Okay, and then on the um the palos, so um i- it appears to me we're suggesting this is a goal, and then some additional costs to focus on this, and probably worth it, so we don't have a semantics, is just to go back to the Wedgwood wedding contract. When we were looking at that, we said, well, if we do this, you get two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars of savings. And Hacienda costs us four hundred thousand operating in capital. And one of the items that was in the savings, well, if we're gonna have Wedgwood, staff will not have to have, spend time on weddings that we were running, right? So that cost would be reduced, and that's in the savings. Staff had mentioned, hey, we want to spend some of those savings on other items, and we sort of tabled it. We said, let's talk about that in the future, which I believe is the February mid-year adjustment. So from that perspective, we're sort of spending some of those saving dollars in what you're suggesting here for this Palo school. Is, is that uh correct?
Well, I don't believe that staff ever thought that the savings would be that we would be re- our recommendation was never to reduce positions. The savings were the savings for the cost of operating the Hacienda. And the idea was to repurpose those funds to other needs that the community has and needs that were not able to be met. So um, does that answer your question?
Yeah, but if we repurpose the funds, then we're not saving the two twenty-eight. We're spending it somewhere.
Right, but I'm, I, I mean, are you gonna take a full-time position and make it an eighty percent?
No, 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 no.
That's not, like, not really reasonable. So that's why we never made the assumption that those people were walking out the door. We made the assumption that those people would be doing other things. But that's a conversation that you guys can have when you choose to have it.
Yes, and are we gonna talk, if, if I may, are we gonna, and I think we're gonna, in the mid-year, February mid-year adjustments, I think you mentioned we were gonna talk about um that topic in terms of those savings.
The council may talk about whatever the council chooses to talk about as part of the mid-year budget adjustment process.
Okay, and then just one last item. So when, when I voted for that, um, you know, Wedgwood, you know, looked good. I knew we were gonna have some sound issues, but they managed, let's, you know, hope for the best going forward. But, you know, I was looking at that two two hundred and twenty-eight thousand as savings to offset the four hundred thousand. So to me, wa- it was important to realize those savings. Now, if somebody wants to spend money somewhere else, well, that's a different conversation. But to me, I was expecting that to be realized. So anyway, okay. I have other questions, but I'm gonna pause. Uh, Madam Mayor?
Thank you, Mike. Thank you. Um, other council member questions? Well, if I may ask, and then Mike, I'll let you ask the rest of yours. So, so as I understand it, kind of the milestones in this process, right? As we're having this conversation about priorities, about funding, about use of funds, about use of, you know, ongoing funds versus one time funds. We have the goal setting coming up, right? We have the midyear budget review. We have the approval of the use of the ARPA funds, right? Because we have to report that out in, in April. And then we have potentially, right, a, a, some, some, some guidance on or, or direction on the use of the Palos funds, right? Which would, which is also part of, part of this potentially.
Well, yeah, if you guys, you can decide how, how you want to handle that. I mean, I do believe you're missing a strategic plan on what you're going to do with those funds. And people have been saying, oh, we've got $17 million and Palos and, and it seemed far away. But it's getting closer. And since the plan will take a while, it's probably a good time to start thinking strategically about what you want to do with those funds.
Yes, and then of course, we have, all this culminates with the 2023 budget process.
Absolutely.
Right, okay, thank you. I just wanted to, to know tactically how this was going to proceed. Mike, you had other questions?
Yes, thank you, just two others. So the, the, the goal that you laid out here was good. And you, you put a lot of relevant information here. You talked about what's outstanding, what's coming in. You talked about how past money was spent. And you also, you know, we, hey, we've got this 225, $2,225,000 payment relating to grading per permit issuance. You verbalized today, but what you, what wasn't in the staff report that I was surprised was the pre-approved staff recommendation by the town council by a vote of five to zero regarding the grading permit issuance. And for the benefit of Teresa and Sona, who weren't here then, I thought I would just quote it. This is two years ago, January 8th of 20. And staff was making an update, actually, on unfunded needs. And they said, in reference to the three and a half million for Palos triggered by grading permits, the staff recommendation was, quote, "Consider funding a supplemental pension trust to manage future increases in CalPERS unfunded pension liability payments and/or some of the town's capital asset replacement needs from Fund 100, which is Palos Colorado." So I, I thought it would be in here and I think it's important that everybody knows that the council approved that five zero. So since we now have that money here and the pension trust amount was a million and a half, that some future agenda item, hopefully in the near future, should be triggered for the council to have that conversation. So that will be coming, correct?
So that is this conversation. So the recommendation was to consider it. And the council said, sure, we should consider it. So now the Palos funds are starting to come in and we're saying, it might be time for you to consider what you want to do with Palos. But staff's recommendation is not to take anything as a one off, because there are so many different elements involved. We have the John Muir Land Trust that's looking to for funding donations for the Harvey property. We have, we have Mulholland Ridge and we have 280 acres, I think, with increasing fire abatement work. We should think about that public land that we own and how much it's costing us to take care of it. And if we want to set aside some of the funding for the maintenance of that. And so staff's recommendation is to really look at all of these things. We've got the school saying they want fields and look at all of these things and then kind of come together and start to prioritize them, which will probably be a multi-step process that will involve kind of looking at all the options, narrowing it down, then getting more information and then deciding what you want to move forward with and probably deciding, you know, let's do these couple ones now and then the next one. So it's a process.
So everything's on the table. Okay, any other questions, Mike?
My last question. So I had mentioned at the beginning of the, the meeting, interest rates spiking, three to four increases. So in a different environment, I might be willing to say, yeah, let's just wait till April of 23 and do the refinance. But, you know, last year we had the conversations, I think, from budget through the end of the year, which was, hey, you, you had identified three outside people, experts, who said, you could actually create a bridge from today to the refinance and, and trigger and realize lock in these savings, which is hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. And we sort of said, well, we know you're busy and if there's any way you could work on that, that would be great. And then, you know, still there's a budget, there's a annual report to be done. And then, you know, normally, so I get this and, you know, we have a new person here. So I understand the challenge. So my question, is there anything Cynthia, we could do? I, I'm looking at this money and it's looking back at me. It, it just seems like it could melt away, most of it, if not all of it. Is there anything we can do, some outside person to lock this in?
So the, the bonds are, or the COPs are callable as of April 2023. And we can begin work, you know, six months prior to make sure that those, that refinancing is done at that point in time. The process of potentially refinancing the bonds requires multiple lawyers, finance professionals, costs over $100,000. And there's real questions about how they go from tax exempt to taxable. It's a huge project and we do not have the capacity to do that project at this time. So we can do it. I think that we can, we can do it when it's a far simpler project. And after we give our finance director a little bit of time to get her feet on the ground.
Okay, no further questions.
Okay, thank you, Teresa.
I, I'm sorry, I, I don't understand if, if we are supposed to, when it becomes time, not for questions, but for discussion, are we supposed to be talking about the Palos Colorado's money or is that another time? I, it's unclear to me.
We, we, I, I think the, the questions are with respect, are on the report that staff just provided. So if you have questions about the Palos piece of the staff report, then we, those, those are in scope right now.
But there's not really a decision that's being made right now.
This is information only, there's, we're not providing guidance or anything.
Okay, so when it comes to discussion, we won't be really discussing, we will just be accepting the report. Is that what you're saying?
We'll be accepting the report and allowing for any comments that council members, because this is the run up to the goal setting session and other things. So to the extent, I mean, I, you know, again, we, I, I, my, my view is that to send council members have got something they want to share for the benefit of other council members or for staff as we move forward, I think that, that's fair game for the discussion piece.
I think I get it, thank you.
Okay. All right, any other questions? All right, I'll open it for public comments. Suzanne Jones, come on in.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you so much. This is Suzanne Jones, I'm speaking on behalf of Preserve La Mirada Open Space and I thank you for the opportunity to comment on this item. It is really exciting and encouraging to see that Maraga is now in a financial position, not only to meet its essential needs, but also to consider how to enhance the aspects of the town that make it such a great place to live and that drew many of us to move here to begin with. In particular, we strongly support the use of a portion of the Palos Colorado's funds for a comprehensive townwide recreation open space plan like the staff has described. As I think most of you know, the Palos Colorado's development fees came into being as a result of the elimination of the golf course from the housing development. And that was something that many, many members of the community advocated for over many years. And as the record shows, while these funds are not restricted, they were envisioned to be used in part to create more open space and recreation opportunities for Maraga. So it's just wonderful now to be talking about bringing that vision to fruition. Based on what Cynthia just described, there is sort of a timing question, but there is currently an excellent opportunity that she alluded to, to use a portion of this money to leverage product, projects that are already underway. And right now, the John Muir Land Trust is raising funds to purchase the Harvey Ranch in Maraga, which would open 143 new acres of Maraga's beautiful open space for public access. Helping fund this acquisition would be a very cost effective way for the town to expand open space access for its residents without the burden of paying for operations and maintenance or bearing, you know, bearing liability. The cities of Lafayette, Walnut Creek, Martinez have all benefited by partnering with the land trust in this way. And Maraga's fortunate to have an opportunity like this again, so we ask you to consider this option. We do also hope that the town, if it moves forward with this plan, would consider using some of these funds to support more native plant and wildlife habitat restoration projects on its own parks, similar to the Maraga Garden Club's very successful butterfly garden at Rancho Laguna Park. And so we just encourage you to take the next steps necessary to move forward with this recreation open space plan and prioritize funding for these, among other, you know, many worthy projects, you know, some of which Cynthia just mentioned. I do have a quick addendum to my prepared comments, which is that shortly before this meeting, I spoke with Bobby Preston, who said she didn't want to comment twice in the same meeting and take up your time. And those were her, her words, not mine. But she did ask me to ask you to count her name among those who would also support the recreation open space plan, including a town contribution to the Harvey Ranch acquisition and funding for more of the types of projects like the Butterfly Project that I think she talked about earlier. So that's, that's it, thank you so much.
Thank you Suzanne. Linda DeChambeau. Linda, you're on mute.
Yes, hi there. Yeah, I, again, Linda DeChambeau is a former mayor and council member, also in Maraga in 2004, 2008. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to look at these threats and opportunities. And the comment you made that it's kind of a run up to goals and priorities is, is clear. I'm just surprised, I just want to make a general comment, that your executive team members did not come up with a mention of the climate crisis as a threat and the stable resilient community as a threat. Because certainly infrastructure, fire, flooding, drought, heat related, all these things that you put in there all fall from that, that crisis. Anyway, on the topic about money and definitely the Palos Colorado's money, while there were many, many hours during my four hours on the council, and I'd like to share a little bit more background on the Fund 100 that was mentioned. Prior to my time on the council, good friend of mine, Sherri Grant, knows a lot more about this. There was a Fund 100 and what they had set up is that anytime there was over a certain amount of money, let's say $2 million, I think it was something like that, the rest would go into this Fund 100 specifically for recreation and open space. The problem is and continues to be, it's a very two different slices of the pie. Because recreation and land don't always go together. So what happened was that council Fund 100 that they had put into the overflow of this, this fund for years was dissolved and it was used to purchase the 325 reing building. And they argued that that was a good use of Fund 100. Well, a lot of open space advocates weren't happy with that because, you know, like I said, they don't run in parallel, recreation and land don't run in parallel. So a lot of work was put into working with the Palos Colorado's and the regulatory agencies at the time to come up with this plan from, from Palos Colorado's. And yeah, maybe it wasn't clear marked in writing. And I'll be honest, a lot of that was because our city manager was on their way out and our elected officials were extremely dysfunctional as a team. But just like Measure K, that money we all assume is for roads. This Palos Colorado's money was always assumed to be for open space. It was to replace the golf course. Also, this concept that started with this Palos Colorado's fund being a temporary bank, we went to all those meetings and we said, if you're going to take from that money. And they said, no, no, it'll go back, it'll go back, it's just a loan, it's just a loan. So to hear that it might be considered for things like CalPERS, which of course I was a four one vote against even go with CalPERS. But to, to get us out of that just seems really wrong. There's other funds, other pots of money. So just try to wrap up quickly here. Basically, you know, I'd love to see it go for Harvey, I'd love to see it go for Mulholland Ridge. I'd love to see this come back. We have a great opportunity that John Muir Land Trust could manage our land since we're not doing a great job of it. And I just ask you, please, as this comes back, as you consider your priorities, do not use those Palos Colorado's monies for any more loans, for any more things like unfunded pension liability. But let's really use that bucket for what it was intended. Thank you for your time and letting me run over here for a minute.
Thank you, Linda.
Appreciate your, your effort on this.
Thank you. All right, any other public comment? Okay, I will close public comment.
Actually, we have the written public comment, would you like?
Oh, my apologies, yes, please, there, there was one that was, there was a specific request to read into the record. Would you please read it into the record?
Yes, this is from Karen Chen. And it says, dear members of the Maraga Town Council, I support creation of a Palos Colorado's Recreation and Open Space Plan. An asset will include funding to support acquisition of the Harvey Ranch, as well as support for the Maraga Garden Club's native plant and wildflower projects within the town's existing parks. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I will now close public comment. Okay, I open it now to council member comments. Again, we're not taking action, we're not providing direction. If, if council members have, have brief responses, reactions, directional ideas, please, this is the time to share it. Who would like to go first? Mike?
Actually, I didn't want to go first.
Raise your hand first, you win the prize.
I know, Steve was sleeping over there, so I didn't know what to do. So first, first I'd like to say, thank you. It's always great to have input, you know, before and it's great to hear from staff. And the SWAT is, is great, so I thank you for the SWAT. Yeah, I agree with many, I think residents would agree with many and, you know, have some differences as well. But that, that's what makes the world goes round. So anyway, I think it, there's a kudos for doing that. The Palos Colorado's recreational goal, I, I wanted to do that last year, as you know, and we have no capacity. So hopefully that may change. But to me, it's a recreational goal and Palos is a piece of it from a funding perspective. And Palos is a piece of it from a land perspective. Where are we at land to put some of these things? So I, I think of it like that. And I also would suggest to you, there's two pieces here. One is the goal. And then, well, what about the resources? And a couple of examples, I think it was one or two years ago, we had a conversation about traffic and some people wanted to put traffic, but we have no time for that. So we thought it was a good goal, hold it for next year. And maybe we'll have some resources. And I think, you know, this year we, we did traffic safety. Another example was climate action, wasn't one of the goals. And we said, gee, we'd really like to have a goal on climate action and what can we do? And it was, well, okay, we'll put it and we'll hope by the third or fourth quarter, we'll have some resources to work on the goal. So I, I, I do sort of think of that in, in two different pieces. The other thing I wanted to mention is there's a reference to some of these master plans, the Park and Rec Master Plan, the Commons Master Plan, the Hacienda Study. And, you know, a year or two ago, you know, we were talking about doing a project and there's a reference to livable Maraga. And I hadn't heard of that before and it goes back to 2013. I asked a colleague, have you heard of that? And that person said, no, I haven't either. And we both looked at it and we compared notes and we said, gee, a lot of these things seem to be out of date and I don't know if they're really as relevant. So I wouldn't want to follow a master plan. I think that the idea here is we're going to get some significant money on recreation. We talked to the residents now, today. And we do town halls and surveys and we, what do you want? Where do you want us to put this money? What would you like to see? And everything's a choice. And then there's only so much money at the end of the day. So I'd like to lean more towards current resident input than relying on past documents that may or may not be relevant. The other item is when we refer to Palos and Linda touched on it for a bit here, I've heard it verbally and it's in the staff report, there are no restrictions on the use of these funds. That's technically correct, but we go back in time and we had Palos with a golf course, right? Had major recreational item, forget whether you play ball for that. But Lafayette and Maraga, we had concerns about traffic. So an agreement was worked out that, okay, we'll take out the golf course, we get more open space and we'll and we'll give you money, seventeen million dollars, that will help you for your recreational projects, and will cover all development impact fees, like storm drains, traffic, safety, et cetera. So, you know, that's, at the end of the day, what we're doing here. And it's very similar to Measure K, right? Measure K was a general tax, because they didn't think they could get the votes for a specific tax. So technically, Measure K can be spent on anything. But we know the campaign was roads and infrastructure. So that was the intent. So here, when we describe this, I would ask us to reference it as, yes, there are no technical restrictions on these funds, and the intention is recreation and development impact fee. So I would encourage us to move in, in that direction. I just want to say, great news on ARPA, and that'll be an interesting discussion, too. Measure K, I, I just wanted to emphasize, and again, for I think Sona's benefit, that on June ninth of twenty-one, the town council unanimously directed staff to create an agenda item to talk about Measure K and a possible resolution. Staff brought that to us in October. We only had four council members. So we said, we shouldn't even think about a resolution until we have five. Now we have five, so I'll expect that to be coming forward. And the timing on that was as soon as reasonably possible. So I know all this comes together, but I don't want to lose sight of these things. When town council gives direction, and we agree on something, I would hope it would be continuing accordingly. And then my last item here is, you know, I, I, I hear you, Cynthia, on, you know, refinancing this. It's just, you know, we might be out of time. So the, the only other option I have left that I've shared with you, I want to share with the council, I will personally volunteer all the time I can, as a retired CFO, to work for staff, as an employee volunteer, to make this happen. Because I'm fearful that the hundreds of thousands of dollars net of all the costs that we have to pay will mostly, if not all, disappear. I'm a rotarian. I like to help. If I can help, I'd love to. So, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Other comments? Steve?
I have my, I have my hand up. First of all, my, something's gone wrong with my computer, and it keeps going dark on me. I presume I have been going blank every so often, and I apologize. I'll have to reboot the computer later, I guess. You rebooting often fixes the problem. First thing I want to do is, is thanks staff for doing the SWAT. It's, it is instructive. There are some areas that I'd, I'd love more details on, but regardless, it, it provides fodder for consideration. And we are getting into the very important season of goal-setting and adjustments, and, and, and moving ultimately to the, to the budget for two thousand and twenty-three. You know, there, there's, there's so many, there's so many pieces to this that we've touched on tonight. It's, it's really hard to, to get into detail, so I'm going to stay fairly high. And I'm going to be fairly consistent in my communications, and it's, and, and I want to say that I, I very much appreciate the input that we've gotten from the citizens, you know, including Suzanne Jones, and, and, but I, I really want also to highlight that stakeholder engagement for this is, is critical. We, we, in fact, if you, if you really were to look at all the, all the opportunities for these, these, these funds, including, you know, related to the mitigation piece of it, pretty, pretty quickly, we're going to not have a whole lot of money in any one piece of it. And so the, again, stakeholder engagement, we, we have not had a survey of citizens of Maraga for years. Came close to it, to some degree, last year, led by Mike McCorr in the Community Engagement. And, and I commend him again for, for spearheading that and making it happen. In that particular case, open space and development was, was grouped together in the results, and, and I'd love to have that separated out. But I, I really think the, the significance that we are dealing with here now, the amount of money, and, and also, we need to recognize that the demographics of Maraga's citizens are changed. They've changed over the last five to ten years, and, and we, we need to take that into account. And so that, that really means the, the, this role of, of engagement, you know, citizen engagement is critical. It's got to start happening soon. There needs to be a, a strategic effort made so that we can get the residents their input, and actually, it's their buy-in. Because now we're talking about real money. And if, if we do not take their input into account, I think that we're going to get a lot of enthusiastic encouragement and feedback. So I, I, you know, my main message, you know, just like, you know, when we, we started down the path for Ridgewood is, you know, stakeholder engagement. We got to make sure we've got buy-in. Do the, do the majority of, of citizens want us to throw all that money at one particular activity or one particular budget? Is it, is it, you know, do they, you know, what are their priorities? And, and I, and I, you know, when I walked the, the, just about the entire town in two thousand and eighteen, when I was campaigning, and I know that Teresa also walked the entire town when she was campaigning in two thousand and fourteen. You know, I, I, I asked every citizen that, that opened their door, you know, what, what are your priorities? And it, there was no one particular priority, but it ranged, the lot, the, the whole range of priorities were, were very logical. So, and we, we, we have the role, in my opinion, to take that input, in however way we get it, to whatever degree we can get it, you know, be it, you know, spot check, or, you know, spot surveys, or, or more comprehensive surveys, and then make policy using it, incorporating it. Not, 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 you know, making decisions solely based upon votes, but, but intelligently applying that information. I think I've, I've spoken long enough. Thank you very much. Again, thanks, thanks to staff for, for making that effort. There are some areas I'd like more detail on, but maybe we can pursue that at the appropriate time.
All right. Any other comments? Teresa?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, Steph, I loved this report. It was, it was terrific. And I highlighted the things that we could do something about. I mean, there's some things we cannot do anything about, like more roads outside of Maraga. I mean, that's just not going to happen, as much as it would be great. And I agree with what I've heard tonight from Vice Mayor Walaki and Mike. I think we have an obligation to the people of the town to hear what they have to say, because this is, this is so monumental. I mean, we have been talking about Palos Colorado's money forever. I also wanted to say, and, and perhaps you folks don't know, but in two thousand and sixteen, we did do a survey, and it was a professionally done survey. And I think the first, the first, the thing that was most important, and pretty much second to important, was nine-one-one. You know, the, first of all, the fast response to nine-one-one, and something else about nine-one-one. I can't remember what the second one was, but the third one was preserving, protecting open space. So, I mean, that was a scientific survey, and it wasn't that long ago. Was that like five years ago, something like that? So, not too long ago. And I read, as perhaps all of you have, the master plan for parks. And it was done, what, in two thousand and seven? And it was really interesting. Some things have changed since then. And, you know, what things have not changed is that Maraga is not on flat land. So a sports field is really a hard thing to accommodate. You know, but we have an obligation to try to figure that out, you know, if we can. One other thing that this report mentioned that I want to highlight is, just a second, let me find it, is the proliferation of misinformation through unofficial channels regarding town business. I think that's something that I mentioned last time, and I think that we have a responsibility to act on that. That's something we can change. So far as the comments that we've heard tonight, it's no surprise that I agree one hundred percent with what Suzanne Jones and Linda DeChambeau said. I think the town has a responsibility to, for open space. And it was interesting, in that two thousand and seven, I think, master plan, it had circles on the town, like an overlay of where parts of the town were not served by parks. And it, it sounds like Mike saw that as well. And the area that was not served was the Bluffs area. And low and behold, that's where the Harvey property is. So if you, you know, I'm sure Linus would be happy to share the map, or you could look on probably the town's website and see where the Harvey property is. And years ago, I did a painting commission for somebody in the Bluffs, and we walked up the old Maraga Trail so that I could get a view of their house. And low and behold, that, that trail cuts back, and it would be, you know, would be the town-owned, and it connects with the old Maraga Trail. So, which goes over to, close to the Sanders Ranch area, it goes to Hetfield, which then goes to Rancho Laguna. So, you know, I, I had no idea, until I looked at the map, how connected those trails are. And then from Palos, from those trails, you could actually go, you know, across Maraga Road, but you could go to the reservoir, to the Lafayette Reservoir. So I think one thing that we need to connect, or to keep in mind, is the connectivity of our trails. You know, we think about it in development and roads, but I think being in Maraga, we have the opportunity to think about it in trails, which is really a cool branding for us. Let's see if there's anything else. Oh, I think clearly, the idea of helping with the Phase Two of Advanced Planning Initiative, and to complete the Bolinger Valley rezone, and to possibly pay some of the pension liability is, and infrastructure needs, is, is all great stuff. I mean, we've got money from different pots, from different sources. And so we'll have to see which one fits the needs the best. And I agree with when, what Mike said, the Palos money has always been, the spirit of it has always been for open space and recreation. So I think, just like Measure K has the spirit of it for roads and infrastructure. So, thank you. I think I've talked long enough.
Thanks, Teresa. Sona?
Thank you. Given that today's presentation was delivered to inform future decision points in February, March, April, I'm going to really use this time between now and then to really educate myself about Palos. And I appreciated what I learned and heard today from my fellow council member staff and from, from the community who spoke up. And will continue to educate myself to prepare for those decision points. On some of the other topics I heard today, particularly around public outreach, I, I really do support this and feel that it is necessary for healthy public discourse in general, and to combat misinformation. I, I agree with how it was outlined and framed. My one piece of feedback about this topic is that, while I, I heard and read in the report that, you know, the priority is around outreach around town business, I think that that is absolutely the number one priority. But we should also think about using this increased opportunity for outreach to amplify every voice that, in every potential pocket of the community. So while we, for example, while we may hear a lot about the tree lighting, we may not be hearing about celebrations of Chinese Lunar New Year or other types of groups or events that, you know, we may not be able to hear from without amplification of that message. And in today's world, it's very hard to get eyeballs and attention. So that's why I was excited to see, you know, this focus and effort around trying to be strategic around getting eyeballs attention around town business, but also think that we can think of opportunities for amplifying other messages that also can tie into our efforts around diversity and inclusion, in terms of amplifying other perspectives as our demographic shift. You know, that is something we all should and, and think about. Those are my comments for today.
Thank you, Sona. So just to, to wrap up, I, I, you know, I, I too am enthusiastic about the public outreach piece of this, including but not limited to modernizing the way we communicate with our community, and in particular, trying to reach, as Sona said, pockets of the community that we don't reach, and providing information to people in a way that is contemporary, accessible in short snippets of time, and that could include a survey component of, you know, just constantly using social media to be out there, getting information in a real-time basis from, from our constituents. So I, I won't belabor that point. I'm, I'm very much, much in favor of that. The, the, the piece that I wanted to comment on is just how we think about the funds that are giving us the privilege and the, the, the opportunity to actually have this conversation. And, and I think that the, the policy question that we have before us, and again, I, I agree, the community input on this is really important, is how do we look at this? Because when you look at the Palos funds, and you look at the, at the ARPA funds, those are one-time funds. Those, that's not continuous funding. And so the, the philosophical question I have is, how do we prioritize the use of that? When I think about one-time funds, I think about closing gaps, patching holes, and funding unfunded things, things that previously were left on the cutting room floor, because we simply didn't have the money. So I am really encouraged to hear that the ARPA funds, the, the restrictions on the use of those has loosened. But I think I, you know, I personally am in favor of looking first at, you know, again, the infrastructure needs, as, as you described it, Cynthia, the aging infrastructure, asset replacement, things that are on the, in, you know, Appendix Three to the CIP every year that get deferred, because we just simply can't reach them. I would look at those. I think pension liability definitely is now in scope and, and on the table. I'm very interested in making sure we are fully funded on the Advanced Planning Initiative and the Bolinger zoning, and that we take into account, you know, a contingency even, so that we make sure that we're not looking down the road at having to supplement fire abatement on, on town property, and, and the, and the communication and outreach, and whatever, you know, sort of technology and, and process we need to put in place. The, the thing that, that I noticed on the list of, 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 I don't know if it's a threat or challenge, or both, or weakness, maybe it's all three, is the evacuation route issue. And I just want to put out there the, the question of, should we be thinking about this outside the box? Because it is a significant issue. I know it's not entirely under our control, but I, I just want to bookmark that, because when, when I see that on the list, my instinct is we need to do something about it. And so I, I just want to, to, to put that on the table. But thank you, Cynthia, for providing this to us. I think this was a very helpful discussion going into our next meeting. And, and, you know, again, appreciate the putting the, the ideas out there sooner rather than later, so we have an opportunity to react and, you know, provide our input. Does anyone have any other thoughts on this? Great. Okay, thank you, everyone. I think that was a really good discussion. Appreciate everyone's thoughtful, very thoughtful input. It was really, really helpful. Okay, next agenda item, ten B, AB sixteen hundred Development Impact Fees. Okay, next agenda item 10B, AB 1600 Development Impact Fees Report. Review, accept, and file the annual report. Cynthia, are you doing?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm doing this again.
Very brief presentation since you can assume that we have read and digested every word.
Okay, I actually have a quick presentation, but you know I can be fast.
Okay, thank you.
All right, here we go. So we have, in 2008, we completed, the town completed a NEXUS study and established five impact fees intended to fund the improvements necessary for to serve these new development projects. And we updated those in 2016. And every year annually, as part of our fee study, we adjust those fees. Let me see, how do I move this? Okay. We, AB 1600 has particular recording, reporting requirements. Basically, the revenue needs to be, well, it requires a NEXUS study to establish the fees that the benefit is going, is directly related to the development. It requires the revenue be segregated from the general fund. It requires we provide an annual report. And that if we cannot use the funds that we return us. So quick review of our Public Safety Impact Fee. We currently have about $200,000 in that fund. We use it for multiple items. And you're going to see at the mid-year adjustment that Chief King is going to be asking for the 13th, the new vehicle for our 13th police officer, as well as some radio system upgrades. And then next year, we'll be looking at upgrades to the video surveillance equipment. Sorry, I'm having a little bit of a, okay, let me figure out how to move these slides. Wait, where is this one? Okay, we also have Fund 760 Local Traffic Impact Fees. We generate very little income from this traffic. So we haven't spent much of the money. Traffic projects are huge. We do have a Traffic Signals Improvement Program. It's a $250,000 program approximately that we'll be recommending for next year's budget that a very small part of can be funded out of that fund. We have the Storm Drain Impact Fee. We've used the money to date for our studies. However, we have $477,000 in there as part of the fiscal year 2122 budget. We budgeted $288,000 for the Maraga Road, roadway and drainage project. So that project is underway. We have Fund 780 General Government. This is a fund that we have, oops, whoa, sorry about that, that we have actually been using to fund projects. We funded the electrical vehicle charging stations, the ADA restrooms. We continue to fund minor improvements to government facilities. This next year, we, sorry, this is a PDF because it was too big. I'm having a little bit of a problem here. General Government, General Government. Okay, so really, the I don't think this is the right one. Sorry. Sorry. I believe that we have some expenses for general government plans. I'll have to look at what they are. We have park development impact fees. We don't have a lot of money in there. We have $195,000. We could see that maybe in 2526, we'd do a big project, a $3.5 million project. Obviously, it wouldn't fund it all, but it would fund a portion of it. The general government, let me go back to that. We have, oh, I know what we have. We have, sorry, my slides are wrong. I'm going to stop sharing. And I'm just going to tell you that our future projects, we funded the Facility Energy Generation Study, as well as a portion of the ADA pathway this year with that funding. And next year, we have envisioned that we can purchase fire abatement equipment, as well as potentially the backup generator or solar. So tonight, so this report was posted on the town's website prior to the end of the fiscal year as required. And it's before you tonight for you to review, accept, and direct us to file it. And that is the end of my report. Sorry about that.
No worries. Any questions? All right. Do we have any public comment on this item? I see no hands. Okay, I'll close public comment. Any council member comments? Mike?
Thank you very much, and please file.
Okay. Steve, did you have something you wanted to say?
I was gonna offer to make a motion to.
Please do.
I move that the Town Council accept and file AB 1600 Development Impact Fees Annual Report for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2021.
Second, okay. Vice Mayor Wolleke, motion. Councilmember Onoda, second. Roll call, vote, Councilmember Onoda.
Yes.
Councilmember Macker.
Yes.
Councilmember McClure.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wolleke.
Yes.
Mayor Sauce is a yes, passes unanimously. All right, on to Agenda Item 10C, Consideration of Appointment of Town Council Representatives to Committees and Boards for 2022. And so the way this will, the agenda item will proceed is that I am going to read to you the the recommended appointments. And then if the council is in agreement, we will put it on consent for the next meeting for approval. I have that right, Cynthia? Okay, thank you. So just so everyone knows that the process is that I solicited feedback from each council member and then tried to harmonize that the feedback with other considerations, including continuity on, you know, the the boards and committees where continuity is important, subject matter, expertise, and 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 other considerations, and also to try to give all council members the opportunity to be engaged in a in a meaningful and and productive way. So the way I would propose to do this is to go on the attachment that you have in your packet, which is the current assignments, and then I will read to you what what the suggested changes, if any, if any are. So the first is the Audit and Finance Committee. I proposed, what what is proposed is that, Mike, you remain on that committee and that I slot in for Steve. The Maraga Arinda Joint Fire Prevention Committee, that has sunsetted, right? So that's not a thing. Okay, so we'll skip over that. On the Diversity Inclusion Ad-Hoc Committee, the proposal is for Mike to stay on that and for Sona to take my place. On the A-BAG Liaison, the currently Steve is the first appointment. I would propose to keep him there and to slot myself in as the second appointment. On AUHSD Liaison, currently it's David Stromberg, who's no longer with us. I would propose that Mike take the first appointment and that Teresa remain the alternate. On the Contra Costa Mayor's Conference, that would be myself as the first appointment and Steve as the alternate. East Bay Mud Liaison, I would propose that Steve take the first appointment and Mike be the alternate. On the League of California Cities East Bay Division, that would be, I would be the first appointment and Steve would remain as the alternate. Chamber of Commerce Liaison, I would propose that Mike stay as the first appointment and Teresa remain as the alternate. MOFD, I would propose that Steve remain as the first appointment and that Mike be the second appointment slash alternate. Maraga School District Liaison, I would propose that Mike remain the the first appointment and that Teresa be the alternate. The Maraga Youth Involvement Committee, I would propose that Teresa be the first appointment and Sona be the alternate. St. Mary's College Liaison, I would propose Teresa remain as the first appointment and Sona be the alternate. Recycle Smart. These, these are voting members of the board and given the the technical expertise required and the very steep learning curve, I would propose we keep it at at me and Teresa, and in particular, because I'm slated to be the Chair of that board this year. So it'd be a little awkward if I wasn't there. The League of California Cities Delegate, I would propose Steve be the first appointment, I be the alternate. County Connection, I would propose that Mike be the board member for Maraga. Lomer's School Bus, I would propose that Sona be the first appointment, I be the alternate. SWAT, LPMC, LFFA, I would propose leaving in that is, as is, that is, that I am the first appointment, Mike is the alternate. Same with MCE, Teresa as the the board member and I as the alternate. And then Art in Public Spaces, I would propose Teresa remain the first appointment and Sona be the alternate. And I believe that covers everything. Did I miss anything? Any questions? Mike?
Did you address the MOFD ad hoc fire?
It's sunset, it's sunsetted.
Oh, okay, and we don't think we need that, or?
Well, it it doesn't exist. Mike, I believe it's sunsetted in June of of last year, so there there's nothing to. I mean, obviously, we can continue the conversation about whether it's necessary, but it's, it it ain't there.
Yeah, we have, we have a liaison, so, okay.
We have a liaison, right. Steve?
I was, I was gonna say that 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 subcommittee was of limited success. We have the liaisons and if the need justifies reestablishing the the subcommittee, we'll we'll do that.
Any other questions? All right, is is the council comfortable putting this on consent for the next meeting?
Public comments.
Public comments. I see no hands. Close public comments. Do we need, do we need a motion here? Denise?
No, if you're just going to put it on the next agenda, then you don't need to take any further action.
Okay.
Thumbs.
All right, thumbs up. I love the thumbs up vote. It's it's part of Robert's Rules of Procedure.
I doubt it.
Yeah, right, exactly. Okay, thank you, everybody. Thank you for your collaboration on this. Next agenda item, if I can find the agenda. Discussion items, there are none. Number 12, Council Requests for Future Agenda Items. Do we have any requests? I'm going to make a request. I I'd like to have a future agenda item be for the staff to bring to us whatever we need to consider and approve the proclamation and other things regarding the Maraga for Monarchs that Bobby Preston asked us for early in the meeting. Do do we have, do I have other council members who would agree to that being a future agenda item?
Well, we have to vote on this.
Yes, okay, so I move that it be a future agenda item. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion in the second. Roll call, vote, Councilmember Onoda.
Yes.
Councilmember Macker.
Yes.
Councilmember McClure.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wolleke.
Yes.
Mayor Sauce is a yes, it's unanimous. Cynthia, is that clear enough?
Yes.
Okay, super. Thank you very much.
Actually, let me, actually, let me just ask Brianna. Brianna, is that clear enough?
Yep, we've got a draft of that, so we can turn that around really quickly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Brianna. And then in in the, just because I thought of this when I was looking at the the committee appointments, I I would like to set as a future agenda item at the at the future at an appropriate time, a discussion about whether we extend the life of the Diversity Equity Inclusion Ad-Hoc Committee, which sunsets in June. So I I make a motion to make that a future agenda item.
I second.
Okay, motion, second, McClure, roll call, vote, Councilmember Macker.
Yes.
Councilmember Onoda.
Yes.
Councilmember McClure.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wolleke.
Yes.
Mayor Sauce is a yes, unanimous. All right, any others?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Clarify, who was the first and the second on that motion?
The first was me, the second was Mike.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah.
So I should just assume that I work with the Diversity and Equity Inclusion Committee on bringing that back?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. All right, no further agenda items. There are no communications. May I have a, Mike?
Yes, communications. I would like to make a suggestion. Thinking back to my first year here and really not getting much guidance on the goal-setting process, which I believe will be next meeting. And I I show up at the meeting and are, is it the mayor's goals? What's my role? Do I suggest anything? So I would like to suggest, Madam Mayor, maybe just a couple minutes is one of the informal traditions, not in the protocols, is the mayor leads us through goal-setting. So could you maybe just outline the process and the the role of the the other council members for next meeting?
Is that Denise?
Communications.
Sorry, can't hit those buttons fast enough. So this section of the agenda is typically held for written communications that have gone out that need to be presented, you know, just so that for council's information. This isn't usually used as a portion of the agenda to just have communications. But I think what Councilmember McClure is just saying is he wanted to let, to ask the mayor to give more information at the commencement of goal-setting. Is that correct, Mayor McClure?
Correct, absolutely. Not a discussion, just information.
I think, you know, he he's just giving you that information, Mayor Sauce. So we don't have to take any action. We don't have to do anything further. He's just giving you that information.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, noted, Mike. Thank you. Duly noted, promise. All right, any other comments? Could I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Sergeant McClure, second, Wolleke, roll call, vote, Councilmember Macker.
Yes.
Councilmember Onoda.
Yes, and I want to say it is 9:39. Good job.
Good job, everybody. Yeah, thank you. Councilmember McClure.
Yes.
Count, Vice Mayor Wolleke.
Yes.
Mayor Sauce, yes, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for your engagement, for your brevity. Great discussion. See you, see you soon. Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Great.
See you guys all next Thursday, if not before. Don't miss it.
Don't miss the bridge.
Don't miss it.
Are you offering ice cream, cake? What do you, what inducements do you have?
There's gonna be water, coffee, and maybe a little snack. I don't know, I don't.
Water and coffee.
Now you're gonna have to come and find out. All right.
Roll cream or powdered cream?
No idea. No idea.
Good night.